Good evening, I call this meeting together from the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees for Tuesday, November 18th, and the time is 5:02. A quorum of the board is present, and this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We'll begin this evening with an invocation by Trustee Duncan and the pledges by Trustee Semler. Please stand and bow your heads with me.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and just ask that you send your Holy Spirit in this room, Lord. Allow us to conduct the business of this district to glorify you, Lord. We thank you for everyone in attendance here tonight, everyone that will speak tonight, Lord, just ask that you be with them as they deliver messages to us, Lord, and as we deliberate that information, Lord. Ask that you be with us as a district, God, and direct us in that we always do things for your will, Lord, and your will be done here in this room tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible)
Our first item on the agenda this evening is our board workshop on the health insurance plan for the district. Dr. Vincent, will you please begin?
Our presentation is about to load. You know, I want to say, first of all, this is a record number of insurance questions I've ever had for a board of trustees, and I wanted to say that's, you know, this often lost, how hard y'all work as far as things go through, and really, really truly understanding where these things are, has been incredibly valuable for us, it's been valuable for you, and in all honesty, some of the questions y'all had, we're going to be putting on an FAQ to make sure that we can help our employees, because it really does help us. So, going through this, it's an important decision to be made, and so we appreciate you in that process of making it happen. So, about, you know, gosh, I mean, very few days coming into the school district, you know, Karen Garza came to me and said, "We've really got to look at this insurance because we're kind of reaching a critical mass," and I'm going to say this too, she's amazing. Her, Tiffany, yeah, amen, absolutely. And Tiffany and Paula, you know, I don't really answer any questions, I just send them to them, and then they answer the questions, so I feel like they're really qualified in that process, but, you know, people trust what they say, and it's nice to have that, because that trust goes a long way, right? And so with that, you know, we're going to provide this information, and this is really kind of an informal process, you know, that's why you do a workshop-style situation, and some of the questions, some of the ideas y'all have had walking through this, I can truly say that we vetted every question as first, to the extent that we can, with every expert that we have here at this table, to make sure it's a different, that we can take good care of our employees. So, the deal is, we have a self-funded employee program, and it served over 6,300 employees and 4,000 dependents, and that's a lot of folks. Financial performance has been really declining over the last 18 months, and significant deficits have been developed which now require us to come to you today. I mean, and we were just talking about this just a moment ago with our consultants, because it's become a serious issue.
Okay. So, I'd like to introduce the people at the table, if you don't mind. We have Brian Lopez and Derek Eko from Gallagher, they're our benefits consultants, and then our wonderful HR staff, Mrs. Paula Green, who's our Executive Director of HR, and then Mrs. Tiffany Matfeld, who is our Director of HR over benefits. And as Dr. Vincent mentioned, I just wanted to echo what he said, and for all those watching online, and for those in the audience, we understand that this topic is really important to thousands of people and thousands of family members. So, the information and the recommendations that we're going to make this evening, just know that they have been thoroughly and thoughtfully vetted through hours of conversation internally, multiple meetings with our Employee Benefits Committee, we've met with our consultants several times, working through this, and then individual meetings with you, the trustees. So, just know that we care, and at the end of the day, we're just trying to make the best recommendation that makes sense financially for our employees and for the district as a whole. So, I have spent many sleepless nights thinking about this, you know, so just know that it's something that has been in the forefront of our minds for several months now, and we've come to a point where it's just no longer sustainable, and so we're going to kind of walk you through how we got where we are, and then what our recommendations are, and what we're asking of you this evening. All right, so just a snapshot of how 24-25 plan performance turned out. We had revenue of 55.8 million and expenditures of 70, so we ran a deficit for the last fiscal year of 14.2 million dollars. We did have fund balance of 7.8 million dollars coming into that plan year, so we did have some money to offset that, but we will be bringing a transfer to you later on this evening for 7 million dollars to shore up the plan for 24-25. That will leave us with a savings account or a fund balance at the end of that fiscal year of a half a million dollars. So, some of the major cost drivers that we saw in the plan performance over the last year was our large claimants were up by 60, we had 199 large claimants in the year prior, we had 259 in 24-25, so that was up by 50.7%. Cancer-related claims up 37.2%, and then circulatory, which is heart disease, up 70, almost 70%, and then pharmacy costs up 27.6%, and this is largely driven by specialty medications and GLP-1 medications. So, those are the drivers that are causing the increased costs that we're seeing in the plan, and what has led us to being here this evening. So, now looking at our 25-26 reforecast, when we brought our plan design to you in April, we were forecasting what our 25-26 plan year would look like based on claims data that we had through the end of January at the time, and we wouldn't not have been able to predict what has happened since January to now. And so, we call it a reforecast because we met with our consultants at the end of September and said, "We need to start looking at this earlier," because we would normally not be going through this process until the beginning of the calendar year, and we prompted Gallagher to start working on this earlier, because we saw what happened over the summer, and we needed to start looking at it. So, they did a reforecast based on more current claims through the end of the plan year, and they were projecting a deficit now of 8.8 million coming into the current year, leaving us, you know, our plan reserves are $500,000. So, we did do some premium and plan design changes coming into this year, knowing that we were going to be running a deficit. When we brought the design to you in April, we thought we would be running 3.5 million in the hole. We made some plan design changes, but we didn't want to do enough to get us all the way there, because that would have been more burden on our employees. So, we thought we could stomach 3.5 million, but now we're looking at 8.5 million as a deficit, so that is another reason that has led us to this conversation this evening. And then looking forward to 26-27, assuming we do nothing with plan design changes or premium increases, 14.1 million deficit projected for that year. And so, we have come to a point now where the general fund just cannot sustain carrying these deficits year over year, and again, this deficit is assuming no plan design or premium changes moving into 26-27. So, the options we have to consider is we could do nothing, leave it as it is, and as I mentioned, we do not have the capacity in the general fund to continue to carry. We could do some plan design changes, this would still require us to do some significant premium increases, even if we were to do some design changes to try to save some money. We could rebid a third-party administrator and try to realize some savings there, it would not get us all the way there, we would still have to do some premium increases, there's limited savings potential in that model, or we could move to TRS Active Care, which eliminates that long-term exposure for the district. So, just an overview of TRS Active Care, it is administered by the Teacher Retirement System of Texas, there's over 430,000 participants in the plan, nearly 1,000 school districts across the state currently participate in TRS Active Care. They offer three plans, their primary, Primary Plus, and their high deductible plan, they are on the same Blue Cross/Blue Shield network that our employees are currently on, they use the Blue Essentials Network, so our employees are used to that, there should be very little disruption to our employees in terms of doctors and caregivers. They are currently out to bid right now, TRS is bidding their third-party administrator, so things could change coming into the new plan year, but we feel good about the fact that they will remain with Blue Cross/Blue Shield. Derek, can you speak a little bit about that, if you don't mind?
Sure. Hi, Derek Eko. Yes, TRS is actively out to bid, our logical progression is based upon how the networks work within the state of Texas, Blue Cross has the most expansive network, and typically has the largest discounts and footprints in areas across Texas. Now, there are several positions that are being decided upon with this RFP that are going to look uniquely different, but we would anticipate that they remain with Blue Cross at least in some fashion or another, based upon what we've seen specifically in your networks, in the areas.
And their pharmacy plan is through Express Crips, which is a reputable pharmacy.
Can I ask a quick question to that? How often do they go out to bid? When was the last time they did that?
Three to five years, just like you all, from a procurement perspective.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, this is a comparison of out-of-pocket costs on the Conroe plans currently compared to TRS Active Care for the 25-26 plan year. So, on the left-hand side is what our current plan deductibles are, ranging from 900 to 3,500 for individuals, and then you can see the comparison to TRS there, and then out-of-pocket maximums, PCP co-pay, you can see that comparison, ours range between 20 and 40 dollars per visit, depending on what plan you're on, TRS is 15 to 30 dollars, and then specialist co-pay. Our networks currently are regional networks, statewide, and then nationwide network if you're on the high deductible plan. TRS operates on a statewide network and a nationwide network for their high deductible plan. So, looking at employee premiums, and this is a comparison of the employee-only category, which is where 70% of our employees have elected in terms of their plan choices, and the blue bar represents where our premiums are today, and we have kind of laid out plan comparisons based on the best comparison in terms of our plan compared to the three TRS plans, and you can see how those premiums compare in the current year. Now, this will change for next year, because, you know, premiums will change as they would on our plan as well, so, but kind of just wanted to give you a comparison of what they look like today. These are across all plans and all coverages for employee-only, all the way up to employee and family, and you can see the comparison there for our three plans on the left versus the TRS plans on the right. And again, these are 25-26 rates. So, here's the timeline that we're recommending, we are going to be bringing an item to you later on at the regular board meeting, asking for a vote to actually transition to TRS, and then we will start the process of notifying TRS, gathering all the documentation forms and things that they need, that election has to be made by December 31st. They will award their RFP in February of 2026, and then we will begin the communication with our employees, as we already have, Dr. Vincent sent out the letter this week to employees, kind of letting them know what the plan was, but we will be starting our communication campaign with them to kind of start educating them on the plan, what, you know, what they can expect. Rates should be published in the April/May timeframe for TRS, and then we will begin summer enrollment, that will look very similar for our employees in terms of what they're used to now in terms of summer enrollment, but we will have all sorts of information, there is a plethora of information on the TRS website already, employees can go and look at all of their plans, look up their doctors, and start making some decisions, or, you know, start educating themselves about it, but we will obviously be helping them through that process and creating a website, and whatever we can do to help them with the transition, and then effective date would be September 1st, 2026, for coverage on the new plan. So, our recommendation is, you know, our current self-funded plan is currently unsustainable, we've depleted our reserves, we're recommending a transition to TRS Active Care beginning September of 2026. Some of the frequently asked questions that we thought employees would be asking, which is important to employees, is, you know, "Can I go to my same doctor?" "Will I be required to move to a different doctor?" As the plans currently stand, they are on the same Blue Cross/Blue Shield Essentials network that we are on, and actually, our Blue Premier members will have access to a larger network, they'll have a statewide network as opposed to the narrow network that they have now, so there will be no requirement for them to move to a new doctor if TRS remains with Blue Cross/Blue Shield.
We'll find out in July.
Yes. Well, we should find out in the spring, when they approve their RFP, who their carrier is going to be. And then, will they be required to get a referral to see a specialist? That will be the same, they are required now on our HMO plans to obtain a referral to see a specialist, that would be the same process that they're currently used to, and referrals will not be required on the high deductible plan, as they currently are not. Will there be changes to their pharmacy benefits? While most pharmacies participate, coverage and costs could change, and this is where employees are going to have to make an informed decision about what plan works best for them, based on the medications that they're currently taking, and as always, they can see the greatest cost savings when they're using generic medications when available. And then, could we wait for one more year? Like, why do we need to make the change now? So, if we were to wait for one more year, we're really exposing us financially through the '27-'28 fiscal year, because there is going to be run-out claims once we move to the new plan, because there's claims that are happening over the summer that don't settle until sometimes up to 90, you know, to 120 days after. So, we'll be dealing with that in '26-'27, even with a move, but, you know, that is something that is very typical, and something that we'll have to plan for. And that is our update, and we'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you. I know you all have put numerous hours into this, and as you stated, you've had sleepless nights over it, and I can assure you, the board has, as you know, because we've been inundating you with messages and calls and everything, so I do appreciate all the effort and time, not just because of the financial impact of it, but because we know it's impacting every family that is on this plan, or any of our insurance plans, so, thank you. Trustees' question?
So, I just want to, sorry, close word. So, it does look clear, you know, from what you presented, that we have, we're going to lose even more money, so I guess our purpose is that we can no longer self-fund, but have we looked into other alternatives, such as the traditional fully-funded plan versus jumping all over to TRS? Have you gotten quotes, you know, from other carriers?
Sure, that's a great question. So, every three to five years, we are required to bid the third-party administrative services, and at those times, we can make the decision to get competitive quotes from both a fully-insured perspective, to have all of the risk assumed by a fully-insured carrier, a Blue Cross, an Aetna, Cigna, et cetera, or continue to remain self-funded. What I will say is, over the past however many years, we've been self-funded for 25-plus years now, there, you would not find a viable alternative in the fully-insured market, and the reason for that is simple, is that we would set a rate as a fully-insured basis on the first year. Now, that rate would assume all of the risk for that year, and let's just say it was like this last year, you all would have run in a better fashion this last year as a fully-insured plan, assuming that somebody didn't see these claims come up, actuaries didn't write it. But, what would happen at the advent of next year is it wouldn't be a 15% to 20% increase, it would be a 30% to 40% increase.
How long do you expect the increase to be after coming out of such a high claim year?
So, those fully-insured plans are rated on a year-to-year basis, unless they give a contract stipulation that allows for a rate cap. Now, oftentimes, we see, we do not see a rate cap, most of the carriers in this size segment specifically are not willing to risk-rate a fully-insured plan, especially with an organization as large as yourself, on a multi-year basis. So, we would see claims from the last 12 months projected into the 9-1 effective date renewal every single year, and so what would happen is your renewal as a fully-insured group would be released year-to-year about six to seven months before, potentially, at the best end, and then they would take your most recent claims and project that into the most recent rates. So, year-to-year, you would be evaluated.
The last time that we shopped for a fully-insured was...
We have never shopped for a fully-insured plan, because it's extremely expensive, and if you think about it, a move to TRS, we are essentially, we will be fully insured, because our responsibility from that point forward will be to collect premiums and send them to TRS, and so they assume all the financial risk, so we will have no financial risk in terms of a district if the plan performs poorly. And so, you could think, even though TRS is a state self-funded plan, ran at the state level, we would be essentially opting into a fully-insured plan from a district perspective.
Right. Like, either situation, we would save money as a district, but we're still going to contribute the 400 and...
That is the plan, yes, yes.
Ms. Garza, question. I read that 90% of districts in Texas are with the TRS, is that an accurate number?
It's about 80% are with TRS, there's about 1,000 districts that are with TRS, and about 275 that are either self-insured or on a fully-insured model, because TRS publishes a list every year, it's available on their website, TRS districts and TRS non-districts, so anybody can go look and see who's in and who's out.
And the last two years have been the dramatic decline, correct?
Yes.
And what did you say the fund balance was?
We have a half a million dollars, after the $7 million transfer is approved this evening.
And what is it recommended that we have in our fund balance?
Well, if we're going to operate the same as we do for the general fund, which is not a requirement on self-funding, it would be 25% of expenditures, so if our expenditures are 70 million, it would be between 20 and 25% of that, which, you know, we're nowhere near that.
For sure. Thank you.
You mentioned the number of districts that are self-funded versus, or with TRS, et cetera. Dr. Vincent, did you happen to check with some of the other districts that are self-funded, and are they running into deficits on theirs as well?
From the school districts that I talked to, you know, just a couple that were larger in size, yes, they're having the same levels of difficulty, you know, and plus, they were looking at, one district had a $50 million deficit, you know, so, being as financially responsible as we have been with the margins that we have is incredible right now in today's world, so, the fact that we've done what we've done and stayed out of those, and its moves like this and things like that, being proactive, that's likely one of the main reasons that we're staying ahead of the game, because it is difficult.
And Gallagher can probably speak to that as well, and what they're seeing from their side.
Happy to. You know, between our clients, new clients, old clients, and even former clients of ours, everyone is seeing a large proliferation of cost and gen fund pulls. You know, we can speak to, you know, KDICD having some really large gen fund pulls most recently, we recently partnered with HISD that is continuing to deal with some increased costs as well, it is across the board. We're at the highest level of trend that we have seen since 2016, so now we are roughly equivalent to a 9% trend combined between medical and pharmacy. That means, you know, the inflation cost, so every dollar that you spend at a facility or with a physician or on a pharmaceutical drug is only going up, and so, we're seeing it across the board regardless of it, and that's also not in the public sector, but also in the private sector as well. This year has been the hardest year from a renewal standpoint on both the fully-insured and self-funded business for our block of business.
And it is your recommendation that we make the switch to TRS?
I've told Karen many times, what I would say is, is that if there is no ability for a year-to-year budget increase to shoulder what is roughly trend on a year-to-year basis, which is 7%, either to meet in the middle and then to increase employee contributions and plan designs and kind, it cannot continue to be sustained without that, and TRS is a sustainable future for you all to get you to a budget balance sooner rather than anything else.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, that means that we will no longer be your client?
Yes, and I've said very clearly, like, I will advocate for you all before I will advocate for, you know, my livelihood, right? The end result is, the end result is, like, I'm still going to have a job, let's, you all don't worry about my job, okay? But, what I will say is, yes.
I'm sorry to say, I wasn't as worried for you as I am my employees in our district.
I know, I know.
But, my point was, is that you are, you're making this recommendation at this...
Of course.
Frankly, I've sat, maybe not in this exact seat, but at this dais, and stated that TRS concerned me, and I, and that's because of things that I had heard, but then when I'd seen changes that have happened over the last several years, and I've been seeing, and you all pointing out, our Blue Cross/Blue Shield, and the Essentials, and all of those are going to remain basically the same, assuming we can, TRS sticks with them, that gave me some peace on this, but I just wanted to make sure that we, and if we don't make this switch, that means that we have in our reserves right at the moment, we would have a half a million, and we already know we're going to be beyond that in carryovers going into September, October this time next year, from coverage. So, that means it comes from general funds, which means...
It has to come from somewhere, and that's where it comes from.
General funds, when you were saying gen...
Gen fund, yes.
Gen funds, I just want to reiterate this, general funds means that's where we pay employees, that's where we fund things for the classrooms, that's where we do all that, so that's even more money that will have to come from that area, because we only have a half a million in there.
Yes.
Okay, I just...
I want a clarifying point, though, if we did go to a fully-insured plan, and you said that it would cost more, it would cost the employee possibly more in premiums, but at either rate, the district would have the same savings, because we're moving that from self-funded to a fully insured.
Sure, and that would be true if we stayed with the 446 contribution, the burden would be on the employee then to make up the difference in premium if we were going to go fully insured.
So, a concern that I've had about TRS Active Care is that I've heard that they have a very high percentage of premium increases, so we are locked in for two years, right? So, we'll have a 10% cap for those two years, but after that, what's kind of your feel on how TRS operates after the two-year lock-in? I guess they didn't always have that, that's new with this legislative session, but what have you guys seen in terms of premium rate changes?
Brian, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so, you're right in that there is a 10% cap for at least the next two years, although historically, for TRS around this region and in general, we really haven't seen, at least over the past three or four years, those increases where that cap was not in place exceed anywhere from 7% to 8% for Region 6 specifically, and really across the state as well, I believe the highest one that a region saw last year was somewhere around 12% to 13%. So, even in the years where that cap has not been in place, it typically has floated around that 7, 10%, across all the different regions. Again, that is subject to change right now, the cap is only in place for those two years, but that's at least what we've seen historically from TRS.
Do you anticipate any changes with ACA going away?
I don't know that I could say for sure one way or another whether we anticipate changes that far down the road, but...
Yeah, and I would say, there are multiple legislation pieces that are out there that are at least interesting, you know, whether we're talking about the subsidization of GLP-1s, for instance, that we know is, like, increase about 27% of your spend over the course. What we don't know is, one, how will that subsidization work for employer-sponsored plans? All of the items are stated that it looks like it will work for Medicare, Medicaid, and health, you know, the exchange-type plans, but the employer plans, whether that's from a fully-insured or self-funded perspective, have been what subsidizes the other side of that, right? So, there is no indication right now if those subsidies that will bring down the cost of, let's just say, GLP-1s, will be in place for employer plans, and also no indication that it will be in place even for non-weight-loss GLP-1s as of right now, so...
So, one of the things that you, oh, I'm so sorry, trustee, okay, so, one of the things that you mentioned was the legislative part, and I know that in previous meetings that we've discussed something along that lines, and it is that when the state tries, puts money into insurance, TRS, to bring down the expense of the hike, it only goes to TRS. So, those of us that have self-funded or outside fully-funded programs, we do not benefit from that, correct?
Correct.
I'm looking at the wrong end, and I'm getting the yes down here at the benefit. Is that, so, that is correct then, so we're not only, I'm not misrecalling that, but, so that means that we're also leaving money for our district on the table, not being able to help our employees by getting that brought down that way? Am I understanding that correctly?
That is a safety net that is only provided to TRS.
Correct.
Yes.
So, if there was, as in the past, a large hike in the rate with TRS, they have, especially... they have, especially in the last several years, I've seen them putting money towards bringing it down for our employees that would be on it.
Yes.
Okay.
So Ozempic and all of the GLP-1s is cheaper on, uh, TRS than it would be on a fully insured plan?
Uh, no, are you, clarifying question, are you referring to the employee's cost or to the employer's cost? For the employee? I can't remember exactly off the top of my head what the plan design is.
It wouldn't, it depends on the plan that they're enrolled in. So with the HMO plans, um, one of them does have a, they have, would have to meet their regular deductible and then they would pay a percentage. And then on the other HMO plan, there's a $200 deductible and then they would pay up to a maximum of $100. So it potentially could cost slightly more, um, depending on which HMO plan they enrolled in. And then the high deductible plan is a straight deductible and co-insurance, just like our members pay now on our high deductible plan.
But there's not a safety net with the GLP-1s by going to a government plan? You said there was some legislation about that?
No, what I was referring to is most recently that, uh, that the government creation that I don't think has been like fully fledged out yet from a Trump-RX perspective, has an agreement from both Eli Lilly and Norvall Nordisk to decrease the cost of what they've claimed as GLP-1s for weight loss. So the, the equivalent to Ozempic is Wegovy, the equivalent to Monjaro is Zepbound. And both of those have, in agreement, said that they would decrease the prices of those two for weight loss. And right now, there is potential that those other things will come down. We do not know how that's gonna play out.
Nationwide, not just, not just for...
Correct, but yeah, from what had, from what it has been pronounced as, and again, this has not been voted on, it's just been spoken about. It sounds as part of a subsidy to it. Um, and so we're unsure how that will play out in the market or when we will see the savings to that, um, the, for employer-sponsored plans like yourself.
Just a few questions. Um, so we're not gonna be processing any claims, right? We're literally just sending the premiums over and that's all.
That's correct, that is correct.
So, I mean, to me, it sounds like a, a benefit, right? We're getting out of the insurance business. Um, employees are gonna have lower deductibles, right? At least for what we can see for this coming year. Depending on when they'll be able to keep their doctors.
Right.
So to me, it sounds all like a positive. So thank you for your work on that, yes.
Yes.
Well, she just said as long as they stay with Blue Cross, but just to clarify, I mean, we would assume that they're not going to choose something that's going to go up dramatically?
Cor- correct. Look, we, we don't have a crystal ball as far as how that RFP processes. I would love to be in the room.
One of our, our planning and construction guys does.
Yes.
We need to get this crystal ball.
Come on over, yes. Uh, but yes, look, our, our best understanding from how the market is from a Texas perspective, you know, we base our analysis in discounts. Who, what network provides the best cost per service? And in the largest rural areas across Texas, Blue Cross bar none beats everybody else. And then in certain areas, there are United Healthcare, Aetna, Cigna that can outpace them. But in general, you know, we look back three years ago, or, yeah, three years ago when we did our analysis, Blue Cross by far had the best discounts associated with your plan. And for three years, it ran appropriately to that. So we would assume based upon that that we would see Blue Cross installed. But again, anything could happen. I can't tell you for certain.
Thank you very much.
Two, two of the major cost drivers that caught my eye were the cancer claims being at 37.2% increase and the circulatory claims being at, um, a si- they're 69.6, 70% increase. Um, based on your recollection of recent trends, are we seeing that, that large of an increase across the board with neighboring districts? And are you seeing that high of an increase in those two areas?
Hmm, let me be clear, not to the trend level that you all are at, right? We saw Conroe's trend, which, you know, from 2022 until 2024 was running at roughly flat. All right, so we, we ran a flat trend. Did not have increases, we enhanced benefits, we were at a really great pace. And then over the course of the last two years, we've seen a 20% increase in trend. So we're basically right sizing what we saw previously. Oh, and that's all claims, not just those. For specifically for circulatory and cancer, we have seen an increase in those costs. You know, assume that when you go to a provider, um, you know, whether it's Memorial Hermann or all the way down to MD Anderson, the cancer treatment costs more. The drugs that they utilize from a medical infusion perspective cost more now than they did three years ago. And so we have seen an increase in cancer claims. We've seen that coming out of COVID and now, you know, where people weren't catching cancers early, they're really expensive, it's difficult to deal with.
I find that, yeah, just very concerning and worthy of pointing out. I brought it up in a meeting that we had last week. But far beyond our 27.6 increase in pharmacy costs due to the GLP-1s, I hear that conversation, but these other two areas are highly concerning. So just wanted to point that out, thank you.
One thing we haven't talked about is more on the preventative side. I want us to figure out ways that we can help our staff to be more healthy, right? We have less of these problems on the, on the other side. So I know we've talked about it in April.
Absolutely, there, there are wellness initiatives that we currently have in place. I believe TRS Active Care has, has many of them as well. But we will, we will utilize, um, some of the savings that we will see from our alternate plan, um, which is a free plan for our employees that is very underutilized. Um, there's about $300,000 that we'll see in contribution savings from that plan that we can then redirect to those wellness initiatives, like the Health Fair and all the things that we do. We, we will have a plan in place and we already do have a plan in place. But that is something that we absolutely plan to continue, um, in the foreseeable future.
In my correspondence with every employee received this email. I think I've been have very many emails returned, but of those, there's what ask about, you know, the same thing that you're asking for is prevention in those processes. So everyone's interested in it.
I'll also say, just to be clear, uh, you know, I work with a lot of districts across, uh, you know, across the state in local areas. You have by far, bar none, one of, if not the best benefits department from a engagement perspective, from a knowledge perspective. And when we talk about wellness, what they've been able to champion and push, not just from your benefits department, but also all the way down to your benefits committee, that I think establishes that while this is abnormal, that I think that your preventative care, your pushing of wellness will continue to succeed because they are fantastic.
Well, and then we'll just add the board being the best informed at this point after all of our questions. Any other questions, trustees? Any more discussion at all?
I just want to thank you all. I know this was a really difficult conversation to have and I just thank you for your hard work and really just doing what's best for our teachers and employees first and then just making a fiscally responsible decision for the district as well. So I just really want to thank you all for putting your heart into this.
All right, seeing no other items, then we'll end the workshop portion of this. And I guess, are we going to reset?
We've got to reset, we have to let the, the stage crew come in here, get everything reset and we'll begin at 6 o'clock.
All right, thank you.
The time is now 6:02 and we are back in session for our regular meeting. Normally, we would be going straight to citizen participation, but our state UIL, um, champion tennis team walked in already. So I'm gonna flip-flop it and do citizen participation afterwards. So if we're now do special recognition, one of the best parts of our meetings, we, uh, when we get to celebrate our outstanding achievements for our students and staff. And I'd like to call up Coach McElvein to discuss or introduce your team. Or me, Schler, I'm sorry, were you gonna? Did I skip someone? Okay.
Uh, I would like to thank the board for having our team out tonight and recognizing our historic season. Uh, we finished the year 19 and 0, uh, highlighted by our, uh, two unbelievable matches at the state tournaments. Uh, in the state semifinals, we were tied 9-9 with Seven Lakes, came down to the last match. Uh, and we won line girl sing- uh, six singles there to win the match, 10-9. The kids stormed the court, were really excited. Uh, we'd made history by just getting to the finals, but then I, I let them know, hey, we're not finished, we still have one more to go. Uh, and then in the state final, uh, you play 19 matches, the first of 10 wins. Um, we were up 7 to 6, uh, with six matches to go. The final six matches all went to third set, super tiebreakers. Uh, we lost three in a row, had our, had some chances there. Uh, so we were down 9-7 with three matches left. And we won, uh, line boys, three singles, 10-8, the super tiebreaker. So now it's 9-8. We won line six boy singles in a super tiebreaker, 10-6. Now it's nine all. Comes down to the very last match, line one boy singles. Uh, Fabio Di Loretto had crammed earlier than, earlier in the match. Uh, so he was struggling physically just to, just to get through the match. Uh, split sets, gets to a third set tiebreaker and he wins it, uh, 10-6. And we, we celebrate the championship, it was unbelievable experience.
Madam President, I want to say this, I got a text right after that from the coach, from, from Wiley, and he says, "That is the best tennis match I have ever witnessed." And talked about how, how much grit you guys had, it's just amazing. And plus you have really got solid, uh, social media, uh, so I'll follow you too.
At this time, I just want to say, begin by thanking our coaches and our parents and all, the trainers and all the support staff for, that have helped lead and get them everywhere they've needed to go. But now I'm going to say something to y'all. Not only did you all make history for yourself in your lifetime, but you've just made history for your school. And that's a big deal, especially given the success and all the state championships that the Woodlands High School has. It's amazing that this hasn't happened sooner and you all fought and battled for it till the very end, as he said, super triple tiebreakers. I mean, I mean, seriously. And not only that, they have to be intelligent because, let's face it, tennis rules are just crazy. You, you, you serve the ball and the ball hits the net and even if it goes over, it's a let. If, if you hit the ball in a match and it goes over and they don't get it, it's your point. So it's just the diff- even just keeping score, add in, add out, love. I mean, how do you keep track of it all? And so I'm just saying, they have to be pretty smart in order to play the game as well. But thank you all very much for representing Conroe ISD in such a stellar manner and the ability to fight as hard as you did for this success. May this last in your memory and may you feel pride in what you've done, that you want to share it with eventually down the road with your own children because it is a really big deal. Thank you very much. I played, I played in my 30s and 40s. All right, I think you all would agree that was definitely worth the, the delay. Um, at this time, we will now move to citizen participation. As a reminder, public participation is conducted in accordance with the Board policy, BED Local. Each speaker will have two minutes to address the board. The board will listen, but will not engage in discussion during this portion of the meeting. All right, Ms. Portia?
Eleanor Page? Eleanor Page?
Does the timer start when I start? Okay. Okay, my name is Chelsea Lara and I am here today because I strongly oppose a proposal to adopt a remembrance day for Charlie Kirk. I say this respectfully as I understand people in this room have very different opinions of him. My goal is to focus on the responsibility this board has to our students, our community, and the values of public education. First, a public school board must remain nonpartisan and represent all students. Charlie Kirk was a political commentator whose work and statements are directly tied to a specific ideological movement. Honoring him with a dedicated day sends a message that our district is... Honoring him with a dedicated day sends a message that our district is endorsing that political ideology. That undermines trust and could alienate students and families who do not share those views. Schools should be places for learning where every student feels welcome. Second, we must ask, is this someone who reflects the standards we require of our own educators? If Charlie Kirk were a teacher in this district, many of the statements he made would violate district policy. He would not be allowed in the classroom, let alone be employed. So why would we choose to honor someone whose conduct would be unacceptable from even our own staff? It is inconsistent, and it sends the wrong message about what behavior we value. Third, adopting a remembrance day for Charlie Kirk offers no educational value to our students. It doesn't enhance learning, promote unity, or contribute to academic or personal growth. Our students already face enough division and distraction. They deserve policies that focus on supporting their education. Finally, and I say this with respect, Charlie Kirk did not hold any public office or official role in government or education. Remembrance days in schools are normally reserved for those who made major contributions to public service, civil rights, or education itself. For those reasons, I urge you to reject this proposal. Let's keep our focus on the students and maintain a welcome and neutral environment for everyone.
Emma Hogan.
President, can we just clarify that it's not a day of remembrance?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Emma Hogan.
If it's not a day of remembrance, what is it?
You can't answer that?
She can't, you can't ask her questions.
Okay, lovely. My name is Emma Hogan. As a mother of two young boys currently enrolled in the C I S D system, I am always looking for strong male figures to introduce to them as role models. I was shocked to see the Board of Trustees had thought Charlie Kirk worthy enough to not only be included in official notes and agenda of today's meeting, but that he deserved a full resolution to honor his life. Maybe you know something I do not. Maybe Mr. Kirk hails from this great state. No, he is from Illinois. Maybe he has completed higher education at one of our many amazing universities. No, he withdrew after one semester at a community college again in Illinois. Well then, surely he must have greatly contributed and advocated for the public school system. No, he did not. He strongly supported the dismantling of the Department of Education and was a fan of the voucher system, favoring charter and private schools over public. Does the board agree with this? Do you think taxpayer money should be funneled away from already lacking public schools? I will leave the board with a couple of quotes from Mr. Kirk himself. I believe college is a scam. Interestingly, I think there's an argument to bring back the M R S degree. Here he is proposing women only go to college to find a spouse. So no, I do not find him an appropriate role model for my children, or any children. I am horrified that the C I S D would think he needs honoring. Mr. Kirk is a podcaster and has nothing to do with Texas, public schools, or even education. Thank you.
Danell Cass.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board, educators, parents, and students. I'm the parent of a student at Conroe High School, and I'm speaking tonight because our community deserves schools devoted to teaching fundamentals, not platforms for partisan politics or religious displays that exclude and divide. From displaying the Ten Commandments in classrooms, to pushing the Texas Blue Bonnet curriculum, and now honoring Charlie Kirk, this only adds to the sense that our schools are being used for indoctrination instead of learning. Why I believe a resolution honoring Charlie Kirk is the wrong choice. One, schools must remain nonpartisan. Our district should not be in the business of elevating national political commentators. Honoring a figure whose public record is defined by partisan provocative rhetoric converts our schools from neutral learning spaces into endorsements of political positions. And two, honoring Kirk would send a harmful message. A resolution is a public statement of values. Choosing to honor someone whose rhetoric has repeatedly attacked and demeaned communities signals to our students and families which voices are elevated and which are dismissed. That harms trust and sense of belonging our schools must protect. Our schools should be safe spaces where every child can learn, grow, and see themselves reflected in the values that we teach: truth, respect, and opportunity. Honoring a divisive political commentator, posting a single religious code in classrooms, and allowing partisan curricula undermines that mission. I urge you, please keep our schools focused on education and not politics or ideology. Vote no on this resolution, and remove political and religious endorsements from classrooms, and return our focus to rigorous academics and honest history. A resolution should honor teachers, students, and community members, not partisan activists who words so division. Thank you.
Bee Gasca. Bee Gasca. Alma Burghart.
Good evening. I am a grandmother to two students in Conroe ISD. I also speak today as a devout Christian. I have studied the Protestant and Catholic Bibles for decades. I have taught faith formation to children from grades kindergarten to sixth grade at two churches through a ten-year span. I offer my background so you understand my position here. I object to your proposal to honor the life of Charlie Kirk for many reasons. Charlie stated that in order to protect the Second Amendment, it was worth the cost of having gun deaths every year. There have been eight-hundred-and-fifty-five school shooting deaths in America. Do you truly want to honor a man that seemed to minimize those gun deaths? Charlie was a community college dropout and said that college was a scam, and told young ladies on campuses that the smarter thing to do was to attend college to find a husband. Do you want our students to have a distorted view on higher education? Charlie said the passage of the Civil Rights Act was a huge mistake, and that Martin Luther King was a bad guy. Are you willing to honor someone that has racist beliefs and divided Americans? Charlie said we should bring back public executions when discussing crime in America. Let's don't forget, he also stirred hate targeted at the transgender and gay communities. In Matthew, chapter twenty-two, Jesus said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." In Matthew, chapter five, verse sixteen, Jesus said, "Let your light shine before men that they may see your good deeds, and praise your Father in heaven." I ask you, did Charlie Kirk exemplify the words of Jesus? My response is no. As a Christian, I don't believe in violence of any kind, nor do I believe in divisiveness or hate. I believe we have a duty to guide our youth, to honor and respect all people. Our students need a positive role model. You were elected to serve our students and teachers to reach educational excellence and to set the highest standards of conduct. Please remember this as you sit on this board. Thank you.
Regina Neely. Regina Neely. Nancy Parsley.
Hello. Thanks for having me. Oh, I guess we didn't do this. I'm Nancy Parsley, graduated Connor High School, nineteen-seventy-nine. My husband is also a Connor High School graduate. We raised five children in Connor ISD. I became a very, very big advocate for children, and throughout my years of volunteering and P T A-ing and so forth. And three years ago, my good friend Scott Kidd, former trustee of the board, approached me and said, "Nancy, did you know that there are over a thousand students in Connor ISD that have no homes? They are homeless or foster?" I had no idea. And we both commiserated about it, the fact that we grew up in such a wonderful town with great memories and a lot of support. We couldn't imagine the students were in that situation. We wanted to help. So, long story short, we created a 501(c)(3). It's in support of the Homeless and Foster Student Support Services, which is a mouthful. So we named our organization HOME for short, which stands for Homeless Outreach Mentoring Through Education. And so far, we've raised over thirty thousand dollars in the three years, each of the three years we've been busy. We had eighteen thousand dollars' worth of senior scholarships last year, and we're doing Angel Tree again for the fifth year, getting students in the secondary school levels, everything on their Christmas wish list. All that is done with community support through businesses, private donors, and fundraising. So we just wanted to let you guys know that we are here, we're supporting Linda Gowan and her team. We're basically a booster club for the homeless. These kids are not in the spotlight, their parents don't want to be in the spotlight, but they need our support. So we're doing all we can, and we just wanted to let you know, this is our fifth year for Angel Tree, our fourth year for Running Home, and our third year for Being Incorporated as a nonprofit, and we hope to be around for several more years with your support. We will do that. Thank you so much.
Stephen Ward Senior.
Hello, my name's Stephen Ward Senior, and I'm telling you, all I'm wanting to do is volunteer for some of these robotics classes, so I might inspire one of these kids. The government calls me inventor because I have a patent. My patent is called an energy-producing magnetic converter. It's even in the title, it's Energy from Magnets. I had to prove it wasn't perpetual motion, which means I've isolated part of the magnet field from the poles, and I want your children to be able to see this patent demonstrated. And, you know, I feel like I can volunteer in one of these classes instead of going through all this other stuff that I have to do to be a, something to sell to you. I'm not selling nothing. I'm giving this knowledge to your children. I don't have but just to the end of the year, and after that, I won't have time to donate to your children. Please, have someone contact me so I can show this to your kids. I hope and pray one will be inspired and discovers something much greater than energy from magnets, because I have, and I know they can too, more so if I get a chance to talk to them and tell them how I'm discovering secrets of the universe, which there's lots more that I haven't even told you that I do. It's all been recorded live at conferences. Not only do I demonstrate this other part of the magnet field that's been isolated from the poles, I also demonstrate energy from magnets, wireless energy, electrical and mechanical. Imagine what these kids might be able to do with this knowledge that I'm wanting to give them. Please, have somebody reach out to me. Thank you, y'all have a blessed night.
Linda Long.
It's been a long time, so it's good to be here again, being, I'm moving out of the area. But I was, first, I just want to thank you guys, you girls and, girls and guys, okay, for what you do. I just am always amazed at that, and I just think it's special, your job is so important. I'm just going to remind you of something I've known before, but I learned it again this week and come across it again, and it's about a guy named Alexander the Great. What a great man he was, and I found out that he took over his dad's throne in three-twenty-six B.C. And this little story was powerful and challenging to me. As a seventeen-year-old boy was brought before him and asked what his charges were, asked Mr. Alexander, and they said, "His charges were, he was caught running from battle." So my challenge to you is, don't run from battle, any of us who are here dealing with, especially with children, our most important prized possession that we have. So then he said, so Alexander asked him, "What, sir, is your name?" He said, "My name is Alexander." He asked him again, "What is your name?" "Alexander." The third time, "What is your name?" "Alexander." And here's what he said back to him. He said, he threw him on the floor, and he said, "Change your conduct, or change your name." That's powerful to me. So I just hope that someday, when I'm standing before my judge, or my friends, that they won't have to say, "Change your name, Linda Long, just change your name, because I want your character." And if you'll allow me to, they kind of know that I do this here, I always give these things out to everybody, if I can do that to you, but I just, this is, these scriptures are so powerful to me, because I think if all of us had this, the fear of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge, and the fear of the Lord is the beginning of understanding and wisdom. I want that, I want wisdom, I want knowledge, I want understanding, so if you'll let me do that. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Long. Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Brent Maddox.
Good evening. I'm a father of four sons at Conroe ISD, but I homeschool three of them. I'm going to get straight to the point. I would like you guys to release the aggregated anonymized testing data from the N W E A MAP test that Conroe ISD has administered to their students, or allow homeschoolers to participate in extracurricular activities. This stems from a few months ago, a C I S D bureaucrat, who I don't know the name of, had the audacity to address this board and say homeschool students wouldn't be held to the same standard as our students. That was his term, "our students," as justification for denying homeschoolers access to extracurriculars. I don't think he knew, nor was he intending to insult Conroe ISD students. That's exactly what he was doing, and now you have the chance to evaluate that insult. Many homeschoolers take that same exact nationally-normed standardized test, including my child. And so, but magically now, the assessment department won't release that data citing this board, the seven of you. There is no reason, nothing preventing you guys, no state statute, no federal statute, no local policy, from releasing aggregated anonymized data on that test. So what I'm directly again asking, either release that data, so tell the bureaucrat to put up or shut up, or allow students who are homeschooled in this district to access those same extracurricular activities. And I say this because I had to withdraw my student three years ago from first grade because he was two to three years advanced above the grade level. He was very poorly served by his school and his teacher. Now he's in fourth grade, and he has finished Algebra I. He's testing at above high school levels for language arts. He's taking a high school biology class. He outpaces the Woodlands High School biology class, but he can't fit back in academically to Conroe ISD because your G T program is awful. I dare you to survey parents on your G T program, they'll all say the same thing. And completely a different note, for years, we had issues with food allergies. If you turn to page eight of your student handbook, it very specifically says, "All food served to students at elementary and intermediate levels has to be store-bought." You posted something today on Facebook, saying that you did not, you were serving, directly, you, the superintendent, were serving students food at a school that was not store-bought. And so, that is a big issue with me, I've talked about this in the past, because we had Conroe ISD employees vandalize my house, they got charged with felonies for doing exactly what you, for me, asking to exactly what you did. And so, it kind of rose to me raw. Thanks.
Ashley Kachrovic.
Okay, I've never done this before. Good evening, members of the board. I'm here today because I want to express my opinion on a point in the agenda regarding Charlie Kirk. I am a mother of two girls that attend both junior high and high school here in Conroe ISD. It is my opinion, our curriculum should be reflecting the values of critical thinking, inclusivity, and evidence-based education. Honoring Charlie Kirk and our instructional materials does not meet that standard. Mr. Kirk was a highly polarizing political activist whose public work centers on partisan advocacy, not scholarship, community leadership, or contributions to education. It's also important to note that Mr. Kirk was a college dropout himself. While there's nothing wrong with non-traditional educational paths, elevating someone who did not complete college as a figure to honor in our curriculum sends a confusing message about the values we want to instill in students. Especially when there are countless leaders who have dedicated their lives to learning, teaching, and improving society in measurable ways. This isn't about silencing viewpoints, it's about maintaining an educational space grounded in integrity, neutrality, and factual rigor. I respectfully ask the board to reconsider this proposal and choose role models who unify, uplift, and enrich our students' education. Thank you.
Alistair Waters.
Good evening, board. Good evening, faculty. Good evening, audience. I'm here today to address the honor of Charlie Kirk in a public school setting. It is not viewed as a neutral act, and public school is a neutral territory for educating our children. This is not about politics, this is about safety, dignity, and factual integrity, what I'm saying. Mr. Kirk has a long history of attacking teachers, educators, the ones that are educating our children. our children. He calls them, he called them brainwashers and indoctrinators and implies that educators are part of a coordinated effort to harm students. Mr. Kirk repeatedly attacked universities, as was said before, verbally calling them corrupt and dangerous. And it's just not appropriate to honor someone who has such a low esteem of education in a public school setting. He also talked about, he made deeply disturbing comments about violence, downplaying gun deaths when that is a very serious thing, especially when we have children getting shot down in their schools. Mr. Kirk also platformed rhetoric about racial minorities, which is unacceptable for someone that is considered a role model. Thank you.
Adriana Ruiz.
Good evening, members of the school board. I am a mother of two children in CISD School District and I must express my deep disappointment. Our children need schools focused on core academics, math, reading, writing, real history, not on political talk. Charlie Kirk's words are unfit for our schools. His language is divisive, wrong, and deeply prejudiced. Mr. Kirk's words are an attack on the ability of women and people of color. He creates doubt. He questioned a pilot's training, saying, and I quote, "If I see a black pilot, I'm going to say, boy, I hope he's qualified." He applied this doubt to others, stating, and I quote, "If I'm dealing with somebody in customer service who's a moronic black woman, I wonder if she's there because of her excellence or is she there because of affirmative action." He even questioned a doctor's skill based on identity, asking, and I quote, "Hold on a second. You're going to remove my appendix and you're a black lesbian?" Let me be clear, I am not taking these quotes out of context. Charlie Kirk himself stood by these statements and never apologized. Furthermore, Mr. Kirk used his wrong history. He suggested less rights for black Americans meant less crime, stating, "When black Americans didn't have the same rights as they have today, there was less murders, there was less break-ins. Why is that?" He then claimed, and I quote, "That the data shows that they were better off in the 1940s. To say black Americans were better off during Jim Crow is racist." The crimes, he cites, are linked to systemic problems, poverty and bad schools, and the harm from slavery. Finally, Mr. Kirk claimed the civil rights of 1964 was a mistake. This argues for a structural unfairness. The act was an essential fix to fix a racist system. Considering his attack on Dr. Martin Luther King, Mr. Kirk said, and I quote,
Ma'am, your time is up.
I said,
Thank you very much for all speaking this evening. And to those of you that it was your very first time, congratulations. It's important to be heard in your school district. So I thank you for doing that today. And you did just fine. I received a reminder while we were listening and I need to make an FYI announcement that for December through March, December, January, February, and March, the board meetings will be held at the Jet Center. Just to let you know that Janu- uh, December, January, February, and March will be held, our board meetings will be held at the Jet Center. That'll also be posted on our website, but I just wanted to make a public announcement about that and I forgot to do it earlier. So just doing that now. All right. Moving on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine and will be approved in one motion unless a trustee requests that an item be removed for separate consideration. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hand. All right, the motion carries, seven zero. Moving on to the next item on our agenda. I have to flip through a bunch here, so give me just a second. We are on to administration, I believe, just to double check myself that I did not accidentally skip something. All right. Yes, that is correct. Administration item. We will now see and receive an update from the attendance boundary committee regarding attendance zones for Grand Oaks Junior High and Casey Arnold Elementary.
President Odwell, members of the board, and Dr. Vincent, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. This is your second no action required update from your district attendance boundary committee on the zoning process for Casey Arnold K six Elementary and Grand Oaks Junior High. As we look here, if you look at the slide, just a few things to point out. Number one, we are in the, on the back nine, to use a golf analogy, so to speak, of where we are in the process. And right here is November eighteenth. Our plan, if things go according to the way we see them happening, is that I would stand before you on behalf of the district attendance boundary committee in January with a recommendation for you for the first ever attendance boundary for Casey Arnold Elementary and for Grand Oaks Junior High. As a point of emphasis, looking at this slide, last week, we had our second, actually had our third and fourth presentations with the community regarding this zoning process. And then also I want to make a special note that I normally don't do, but I want to do this time. If you look at the top, you can see on November sixth, we had our penultimate, also known as the second to last meeting with our attendance boundary committee in this process. And I want to make a special salute to these people. Two years ago, we had an open call at our website for people to volunteer to be on this committee. And we had seventy something people that volunteered, parents from all different areas of our district. And these people were pulled out of a hat and they have served without stop continuously for two years with really nothing other than a few snacks here and there and barbecue once and just a lot of thanks along the way. We appreciate them. The committee is made up a majority of parents and you can see the committee here and they have worked steadfastly and they have really been instrumental in really designing the majority of the boundaries that you have approved. So you can see the names there. I want to recognize and thank everyone, but especially the parents that are listed there at the top. I'm not sure they really knew what they were signing up for, but they've stayed with us. So we appreciate them. So I chose this slide for a reason. My dog is not recommend, is not recognized by the American Kennel Club, but this one is, and this is a border collie. And I chose this for a number of reasons. Number one, this is an officially licensed image from the communications department, but also I thought it was a really cute dog. And looking at it, you can see it is a teeter totter or where I grew up, a seesaw-like structure. And you can see the deliberation and attentiveness of the dog's eyes, but also you can see the balance. And the balance really represents for the committee what we've worked on doing and trying to come up with the best numbers and best recommendation for you when it comes to zoning recommendations, really when it comes to Cox and Clark, also Grand Oaks Junior High and York Junior High, and also for the trifecta of Arnold, Hines, and Bradley. So we've been working through this and just to give you an update, we talked about last time, a few things. First off, Casey Arnold is scheduled to be a K six elementary school, open in August of 2026. It's on Woodson Spring Drive. It's coming along swimmingly right now and we're happy with the progress we're making there. Grand Oaks Junior High, some of you had a chance to visit it during the summer. I'm sorry it was so hot when we were out there, but it would not be as hot now. But Grand Oaks Junior High is scheduled to open in August of 2027 and it is on the southeast corner of the Grand Oaks complex. And that leads us to this slide with great synergy. If you look right here, this is Grand Oaks High School. Over here on the southeast corner, you're going to have the ninth grade campus for Grand Oaks as well as Grand Oaks Junior High. But also if you look at this, you can see really highlighted is Woodson's Reserve. And you can see also Woodson's Reserve here, an older section that is not as highlighted, but it's all Woodson's Reserve. This is Woodson's Reserve and this is Woodson's Reserve East. It is a separate independent part of Woodson's Reserve. It is on the east northeast side of Townsend Drive. We talked last time, Townsend Drive runs right through here, close to Arnold Elementary, past Waterbin Cove, and is scheduled to connect right here to Imperial Promenade in early 2027, which is a really big deal if you live in that community. I know some of us do. So if you look here, I want to emphasize a couple of things. You can see Hines Elementary, which when we opened Hines Elementary, that was the outback, like many other campuses in other areas of our district. Up here you can see Arnold Elementary. Down here, I want to emphasize this school. This is not a school. This is representative of a potential future school. We own the rights to the land. I always say it's on layaway. We don't own the land. We don't have a design for the school. There's no plans for the school. But Toll Brothers has reserved that land for us at sixteen and a half acres. So I emphasize that and I show that because as we've worked through this process and we're trying to make for you a recommendation, we want to make into consideration to play chess and not checkers and make a recommendation that when we do open a next school, potentially in the future, that we would move families or children the least amount possible. So we try to take everything into account. I would tell you in talking to Toll Brothers, from today, they're expecting another thirteen hundred homes to be developed in this independent section, Woodson Reserve East. If you look right here, TriStar has a large number of residences coming to this area just to the south of Raleigh Fuzzell. If you use 2022 passive numbers for conversion factors, that means from this area here that I'm highlighting or trying to with this device, we're looking at around nine hundred additional students by sometime in the year 2029, give or take. So that's a lot. So if you look at it, Woodson's also an important factoid, it may only interest me, but I will tell you, Woodson's Forest Drive is being connected as we speak. They're working on it to connect to this part of Woodson's Reserve where a potential future school would be. And also a source close to me called me today to tell me Woodson's Grand Drive, which is right here on the east side of the Grand Oaks Junior High, that now is open and does connect to Raleigh Fuzzell, also known as ninety-nine for the main part. We talked about this.
Mr. McCourt, could I just back you up one second?
You got it.
And that top highlighted area that you were highlighting up there around Woods, yes, that whole area, that's another nine hundred rooftops?
No, it's another thirteen hundred rooftops here
Okay.
From Toll Brothers. And then TriStar is going to develop this area. If you multiply the rooftops from TriStar and the rooftops from Woodson Reserve and you multiply it times zero point five six, which is the 2022 passive conversion factor, it comes to around nine hundred students kindergarten through twelfth grade.
Okay, and so that, the Casey Arnold.
Correct, right over here.
We're already going to zone approximately theoretically how many children to that?
That is an excellent question. And that is a question, and that is one reason that teeter totter picture was in there, because we know right now that Hines Elementary is close to full. And just not to jump ahead too far and I'll go back.
I'm so sorry. I shouldn't have let you continue.
This is great.
I can wait.
So right now, if nothing were to change, everything you see, and I can't decide if that's blue or purple or
Periwinkle.
Periwinkle, thank you. I'll take your word for it, I don't know what that means. If you look here, we're right at capacity, approaching capacity at Hines Elementary. So every new home that was occupied by family and students in Grand Oaks at the elementary level in that area that's periwinkle, that would go to Hines. Well, that's not going to work. Hines Elementary will not be able to hold that many students, which is why we plan and why we have Arnold Elementary, which is opening.
And then if you'll go back to that slide and then I promise I won't interrupt next time because I don't want to get you out of order here, but that other gray area that you highlighted, it down below Hines, oh, that, down, that all the way and around?
Yes.
That's, are those the ones going to Hines or potential?
Well, right now, not to spoil, so it depends on what you do. This is where we are right now. And so Hines Elementary wouldn't really be able to accommodate many of those kids because it's at capacity. So to put the cart before the horse here, as our plans are right now, and this is the overwhelming favorite of the community, and you have, we submitted the different comments, they would go to Arnold Elementary because that's where we have space. So that's right now, but there is a future and within a range of outcomes where this school could be potentially built here and that would start to take some of the people from the south. What is really driving it is access. Access, Grand Oaks is always determined by access and detention. If you have detention, you can build homes economically, they're going to build homes, but you have to be able to get to those homes. Really, that was the same thing for everywhere in our whole district. Could we get there and was it fiscally responsible to be done by a builder to get people there?
Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry.
I hope that helps. No, that's great. It's good. So right here, we're in good shape. I talked about this last time and I made a reference to Halloween, but remember we're in pretty good shape because we have the ninth grade campus coming online for Grand Oaks. You have Grand Oaks Junior High helping out York. You have Casey Arnold K six helping out Clark and Cox. And then over down here, remember for Hines and for Bradley, that's where Casey Arnold K six can come into account. And then right here, this number is fast forwarded. Ford Elementary will be under capacity for the first time in much of my life. We're adding a gym and a hundred seats to Ford Elementary and it's scheduled to open in January of 2026 and the team there is very excited about that. So right here, just to look at this, I showed this slide, but everything in periwinkle goes to Arnold Elementary. If, well, everything in periwinkle right now goes to Hines Elementary. So if you fast forward, everything here in that red color, peach color, pinkish color, that goes to Clark. Everything in yellow goes to Cox Intermediate School. And really a common line of demarcation you will see in Grand Oaks is Burnham Woods Drive. And I know some of you live in Burnham Woods Drive. Burnham Woods Drive is a pretty big deal. So it works out as a line of demarcation right now for current intermediate zones. This is C two point one. And in this one, everything in gray would go to Arnold. Everything in that periwinklish color would remain at Hines Elementary. Everything above ninety-nine up here in pink would go to Bradley. Because remember, we have ten portals at Bradley. Bradley is a campus of concern as far as space availability and functional capacity at this time. So here's the corresponding intermediate version, because it's K six, you have to talk about the elementary version and the fifth, fifth and sixth version. So everything here, everything in gray would be a fifth and sixth grader at Arnold. Everything in this pink, pinkish color, peach, whatever that is, they would go to Clark and everything in yellow would go to Cox. So on this map right here, honestly, right here, Arnold, right here, you have Clark. And over here on Waterbin Cove, which is a very busy area, you have Cox Intermediate School, right there by Snyder and York. This is the other version that's under consideration by the committee as I stand here for you tonight. The only difference is this B fifty-seven area at the top. In one version, B fifty-seven, which is mainly Palmetto's right now, it's wetlands, but remember, almost everything you see on this screen at one time was wetlands. So it goes to Arnold in this version and it goes to Bradley in the other version. And there's the corresponding version at the fifth and sixth grade level for version C two point one point one. So right now, the committee, two, two different versions at the elementary level, C two point one and C two point one point one. The plane is circling the airport. The plane has not landed. The plane has not landed until you land the plane in January of 2026. At the junior high level, I use this simply as a point of emphasis, York is perennially over capacity. It's over capacity now. It has nine portable buildings in use. If you go to school and you're a junior high age seventh or eighth grade kid in Grand Oaks, you go to York Junior High currently, it is considerably over capacity. We have a scenario right here. This is the location for Grand Oaks Junior High. This is the location right here for York Junior High. In scenario B, you have everything in gray going to Grand Oaks Junior High, everything in yellow going to York Junior High. And then you come to scenario E two A, which was submitted by a patron online. On that patron online's version, Burnham Woods is still your line of demarcation. The two scenarios are exactly, are exactly the same, south of ninety-nine. Their only difference is, and this version, scenario B, Wright's Landing, which is this area right here, Wright's Landing goes to York. In scenario E two A, Wright's Landing goes to Grand Oaks Junior High. So those are the two scenarios we have right now. We've not received much feedback for junior high scenarios. We've received a lot of feedback, seventy-one as of this morning. Most of the feedback is for the elementary scenarios. And for this second update, that's what I have. And I'm happy to answer any questions and do what I can.
Questions, trustees? Discussion? Can you tell me on that one little triangle section for Wright's Landing, do you have any idea of how many rooftops impact how student for junior high, I meant, sorry, the junior I meant, sorry, the junior high one?
Junior high?
Um, B, whatever that was.
I can tell you, if I can see it.
Um, it's the one that you had where it switched, oh, you're needing to look at that number.
Sixty-one junior high students at Wright's Landing.
And Wright's Landing.
That little V number in.
So is there a reason, would that make a huge difference for them to, in the, in the design, for them to go to junior high Grand Oaks?
That is the ultimate question. And that is an issue. So we have eight hundred seats that we could afford for Grand Oaks Junior High. So we want to open Grand Oaks Junior High, as we talked last time, as large as we can for the programs we have there. But we want to open it large as we can, but not so large that we're going to be coming back to you in no time asking to rezone it because we are over capacity with the eight hundred seats we have. So we know that we're going to have, just coming from that Woodson's Reserve East, we'll have in a, notwithstanding other growth in the greater area, just for the area on the other side of Townsend, there's going to be by 2029, another nine hundred students. That's going to be about a hundred and forty kids for junior high. So we know, whatever number we zoned it at, by 2029, which is not that far in the future, we can add approximately, give or take, a hundred and forty students to it. So we know we have an eight hundred seat capacity, and we're flying without a net. There's no room for portables.
Right.
So we're going back and forth within the range of six hundred, between around six hundred and five to six hundred and fifty, and trying to work it out, and trying to do so in a way that we do not divide neighborhoods.
Right.
And if we have to move a neighborhood, we want to move a large part of the neighborhood so we have kids that are able to stay together.
That answered the main question, is that I didn't, I was, I wasn't thinking about those nine hundred that would be coming up to it. And in the few, and we've already got that junior high split between the ninth grade campus and the junior high campus. And eventually, it'll be the ninth grade, and we don't have the plan for the junior high at this time. So we definitely don't want to overcrowd it, you know, going into it. So that answered my question. Thank you very much.
Well, good. We tried, so. So that's really it. That's the ultimate conundrum that we face as a committee.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Mr. McCourt, I just also wanted to say thank you. This is no easy task. I mean, I can't even imagine how much work has gone into this. So thank you to your team and to the parents that are submitting feedback as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I just, a brief plug, Cindy Smith, Operations Secretary's been great, Steve Muir, Regina Whittycrane, Dr. Povich has been a lot of help, and Mark Anderson Merle, who's out here somewhere, he's been a lot of help. He's been a lot of help along the way, too. He's real good at math and stuff, so.
Okay. Our next-
Appreciate him.
Our next item, we'll receive information regarding district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. Wow, that's a mouthful. Followed by the Conroe High School construction update and an update on implementation of school board policies. You sat down too quickly.
So quickly, intruder, we continue our intruder detection audit reports for TEA. Region six conducts them. As of today, and it continues to develop, we've had twenty-three intruder detection audits, random, unannounced audits. Of those audits, we had no findings in August. We had no findings in September. We had no findings in October. We've had nine audits in November. In November, we did have one audit with a finding, one part on one campus. That campus has already undergone the required TEA remediation. We know that all of our campuses are going to be audited this year. So we're twenty-two out of twenty-three, and we continue to effort to make it to be a perfect score. We do live in the real world with real people. And so special shout out to everyone on the campuses. This, I say this every time, and I don't want to embellish or just say it so often that people become desensitized to it, but we're keeping cities, every door in a whole city locked all day, every day, while people have to function. It's really incredible. So we want to be perfect. We're twenty-two out of twenty-three, and we don't want to let you down or let anyone down. So I can discuss with you the specifics of that one out of twenty-three findings in executive session.
Thank you very much.
And also with the safety committee, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Conroe construction update, Conroe High School construction update.
So good evening, President O'Dowdwell, members of the board, Dr. Vincent. I think Andrew's going to start with a short video, and then we'll get into questions and answers.
Pardon my back.
No problem.
I can't see through you. You may have a crystal ball, but you are not see-through.
My dad was not a window maker.
As we fly into Conroe High School, you can immediately see the constant activity taking place across the site. Concrete crews are hard at work shaping the new front entry of the district's flagship campus. Nearby, masonry teams are building the walls and interior partitions that define this space of construction. Structural steel insulation is also underway, connecting each section of the campus and ultimately bringing the entire school under one contiguous roof. Above those structures, crews are installing the roof deck and lightweight insulating concrete as they work to fully close in the building. Exterior wall sections are rising across the site and will soon be followed by window installations forming the complete exterior envelope of the new facility. Inside the building, progress continues with wall framing as well as installation of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems in the ceilings and wall cavities. This final phase of construction is scheduled to be ready for use by staff and students in August of 2026, with the new school year opening and the completed administrative offices at the new front entrance of Conroe High School.
I mean, at this time, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions or get into specific details as far as we can. So I'd turn it over to you.
So the substantial completion date is August 2026?
Specifically, August third of 2026.
Okay. I, I did ask that earlier this week. I'm not sure why I'm just hearing it right now. Would have preferred to hear it earlier this week, quite frankly, but.
Well, I did respond to Dr. Vincent on Monday, but in my defense, I have a couple hundred emails behind today, but.
Right. Right. I also requested to see the original schedule and then the updated schedule. Is that possible to send over?
I mean, so I can, I can gather that data. The schedule itself has been a jumbled mess. I mean, because of the original, the original phasing and the actual phasing don't necessarily align a hundred percent. But the original substantial completion date was in August of 2025. So we've had lots of world circumstances and project circumstances since then. It extended that time approximately a year. So we went from a fifty-four month duration, which was an original estimate, to a sixty-six month duration to finish the project.
Did the price go up then, since it took an extra year? Did our price go up?
So the, we did, we have been back to this board to offer that project two change orders that changed the total guaranteed maximum price for that project. So we've added seventeen point seven million dollars to that course of that project over, over its life. Some of that is to do with mainly material escalations and things that have happened in the last, you know, four years of construction. Some of it has been due with changes that we, the district, have also wanted to involve in that, in that building. In 2019, we, we did not have an ed spec in place specific to high schools, and the 2019 bond is the impetus for the Conroe High School contract we're currently under. So part of the last change order, which was seven point seven million dollars, bringing that total to seventeen point seven million, also includes changes from the district to bring Conroe High School more in compliance with the ed spec that the board approved in January of 2023. And so it's not, I mean, it's not, not, there's not a clear path from August of twenty-five to August of twenty-six, but that is part of it.
So how do we know that August twenty-six is going to stick now?
Well, we, we work diligently with our contractors, and the good news is we can compare this work where it's currently at to work we've gotten in other places in the district. It's really easy to see now how that whole plan has come together. So the state of the work on that currently, current campus and where it's at relative to our other, other projects gives us a good comparison sake. But we're working with our design team, with our contractor constantly to make sure that we're staying on that target. So the commitment currently of everybody on that team is to turn over that new front entry in August of 2026. Because constantly, we, we always try to hit the areas where it makes sense to start school or start a semester. So we're pushing for August of 2026, but the next opportunity would be January of 2027. So that would have a detrimental impact on the overall management cost of the budget, not, not to mention, oh, my goodness.
So wait, are you saying that it could potentially be pushed to January of twenty-seven?
No, ma'am. We're, we're committed to August of 2026, but, but those dates, like if, if our contractor said, I'll finish in September and not August, we're pushing them to August. So there's a collective effort for August so that we make that opening of school.
Is there a fee? One more question. I'm sorry. Is there a fee to the, the contractor if they go past the deadline? Does, do we, do we reap some of this back as an owner? Do we reap some of this back as a fee?
Our contract does include liquidated damages as the penalty for missing the contractual obligations. To assess liquidated damages, we would go through a notification process and prove, prove our point, but those do exist.
But we're already a year out, right? We're, because it was originally August of twenty-five, and now we're August of twenty-six.
Right.
Why don't we have fees coming back to us for that?
Collectively, our board, we presented change orders to the board and on two occasions, and we agreed to those change orders. So the, the contract date and time is set by those change orders.
Do you recall the date? Sorry, do you recall the date of those change orders?
Yes, ma'am. Change order number one was November of 2023, and change order number two was April of 2025.
Do we have a new contract that states August third, 2026 on it?
We have a, a, a change order document, which is-
And it has a specific date on it?
Correct.
So unless it comes to the board again for additional changes, that is the date of completion?
Yes, ma'am.
And anything after that will be liquidated damages?
Well, there's, we would have to establish that position, but yeah, those penalties do exist.
Okay.
May I still see the schedule? I know it's a mess, but I would like to see the mess.
I can gather for you.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
No problem.
Also, I'd, I'd be interested in knowing, can you tell me what percent of the change order had to do with, and I know you're, you're going to have to be a guesstimation here, but what percent of the change order had to do with our ed spec increases?
I mean, on an order magnitude, the seven point seven million had about three and a half million dollars of ed spec changes.
I'm sorry, say it again.
About three and a half million of that seven point seven.
So, but what percent of the pushing it out? In other words, how much did we add to the work project? Not dollar wise, but thank you for that, because that was, can probably be a follow-up question. But of that seven point seven, what, not the money amount, but time amount of the year delay, what, what percentage do you believe constituted the year delay?
So we got into that, that year delay in the first change order for the, for the ten million dollars, if you'll remember, remember that. Because we were dealing with concrete allocations and steel allocations and supply chain issues. Our utility provider, go all the way back to 2021, the original athletics portion of this current phase, our school superintendent at the time called in a favor with our utility provider, CEO to CEO, and we did get some of the promises delivered, but we didn't get all of them delivered. So there was an original six-month delay in getting power to Phase One that we've been fighting to overcome ever since. At the end of Phase One, we ended up with that concrete allocation where we were trying to pour sixteen hundred yards a week, and then we got settled down to four hundred yards a month after we delayed that. So we had to bring other, other processes in there, try to get, get work done and still maintain the opening of school. So the, the important part of all of these processes is making sure school opens when school opens. And so sometimes eggs get broken in that, in that process. But we, so far, over each school year, we have opened school when a school is supposed to open, even though the phases haven't, haven't been perfect in that alignment.
Okay. And then my, my next question is, is because of that six-month delay and them not delivering based on, on what they had promised to us, all of the pieces, if we had bid this project CSP, Competitive Sealed Proposal, wouldn't they have then incurred that, that delay charge, that expense as far as the time? They would-
No, utilities are, are provided by the owner typically. So the, the working with the utility provider is an expense the owner bears.
Regardless of its guaranteed, or C Mar, or a risk or their risk?
Correct. Because we owe them the utility when they need it. And in that particular instance, we were not able to deliver that.
And then on the, so when I was asking about the percent of the change based on our ed specs increase, which we voted on in November of twenty-three, am I correct? That's when it was?
April of twenty twenty-five.
Or that was the April twenty-five vote?
Correct.
Okay. So in, in relation to that, remind me again what you just told me, what percentage of the increase was the, the amount of the work?
I'm not going to do math in my head right now, but-
That's okay.
Essentially, half, a little more than half of that seven point seven million dollar change order.
Okay. I just, I really, I, I feel like every time we drive by, it reminds me of forty-five. It's always under construction.
Well, and I'll remind you, the original project started, the inception, the very first design meeting was 2014, right?
That's, that's the thing that has my stomach and not.
We have literally been on that, on that site doing something, making this master plan come, come to life for just over ten years. So construction started in earnest in 2017, from the 2015 bond referendum. That project was finished on time and then kicked off the 2019 bond project. We were able to roll from one right into the other. So that project is ongoing, and it has been, I mean, we all have project fatigue, but we can literally see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it is the light that over the course of the next week-
As long as it's not the train coming at us.
It's not. Because what, well, the good part is, as we reached the Thanksgiving break, we're shutting down the power to that campus so that we can actually join all three of those buildings together through the current state of construction. So when the kids return from the Thanksgiving break, we'll have full power across the campus, which we have not had since we started the athletics addition in the beginning.
Okay. So just to reiterate and confirm what Trustee Nelson just asked, I believe it was you, we do have a, a contract that states whether it's in the change order or however it's stated-
Yes, ma'am.
August of twenty-six.
Correct.
August third.
August third.
Yes, I had the third, but I was just, okay, August third of twenty-six. Okay. And then you said the substantial completion. And I think, the wife of an attorney, I understand the word substantial does not mean complete. So to what percentage will we be complete?
So substantially complete means it is suitable for the use for its intended purpose. So we, we will have all the life safety systems in place. The front door will be under our locking key. We'll have the full control of property insurance, things that nature, for that, for the, for the building. It's ours for our use. The contractor's still going to be there doing punch list and, and other, other work as we go through. The contractor likely won't actually physically leave that site till the end of the calendar year because it's, it's a large building and they've got punch list items that they're, they're working through it. But we'll be able to use it for the purposes of having school and using the front office for its purpose for all the things that happen leading up to that first day of school in August of 2026, which is what substantial completion means.
But we'll drive by and it won't look like it's under construction, correct?
Correct. That is correct. The blue fence on the road on one oh five will be down, the trailer should be out of there, everything's cleaned up. Students will be parking in the parking lot on this side of the building, uh, or teachers, whoever is, is in that parking lot. But, but for all intents and purposes, the contractor is invisible, they're occupying a space inside the building and working nights and weekends as they're, as they're finishing up their details.
So, so we've been under construction at Conroe High School for ten consecutive years?
For, so the construction actually started in, on this master plan in twenty-seventeen, so not quite ten consecutive years, but it's been, it's been a long time, but we've been-
Long enough.
Correct, absolutely.
Trust me, it's been quite an opportunity for me to kind of look at the lineage of this whole process. We're still trying to actually put through the whole process of when we started, how many changes have been made? And then, you know, the whole process through, one of the things I wanna do in the, in the, in the, in the spring with you guys is get a really clear goals, plans and objectives about how we do construction and what we do construction with, and then clear plans and goals as far as all that stuff goes. So, you know, he can work through this and we can work through this and we can know what we're doing it. Cause I mean, it's right, since two thousand and fourteen, God love her, she's doing a great job, I appreciate you Tosh, but the thing is, it's a lot to deal with and so, you know, those kind of clarities, it changes. I mean, we've changed three times in terms of the process and, you know, all those kind of things, that has fatigue on everybody and so.
I can, I, and I remember the last board, even before we were elected, sitting here asking those same questions. So I, I mean, um, trustee Chase kept asking all the time about Conroe High School, so I, I know.
Yeah.
Um, all right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just, I wanna be clear, I agree, I think somebody else on the DIAA said it, that like, we wanna hold to that date and not move on that date, period. And if there is, you know, any movement on that date, I think that, that the contractor should pay a fee, a recovery fee back to the owner on it, like this is-
I, I can assure you, when the contractors are responsible, we do actually hold them responsible for it.
Okay.
But we do, we do take our, our burden seriously. I mean, it's not, we're not in the business of giving money away for the sake of giving money away. We want our due, uh, value for it.
But I just, but, okay, maybe I'm confused here then, because I, when I asked you what percentage was due to our change order of ed specs increases, which is to benefit our students and our teachers' classrooms and instructional ability, you told me it was about half.
Of the, of the seven point seven million change order number two.
Okay, but what I was trying to get at is what, about what responsibility of it is ours that we were, I guess I shouldn't word it the way that you understood what I was trying to find out.
You have a much deeper question. So, leading up to that seven point seven million dollar change order, uh, and our architect is in the room with us and, uh, Mr. Boyd can attest to how many hours I put them through going through every single change that's happened on that project and allocating responsibility, if it's ours, the owner's responsibility, the contractor made a mistake or the design team's made mistakes. So we allocated all those things. So the, the surprise, I mean, not really a surprise, but the, the data pointed out that Conroe ISD has severe culpability in the total amount of changes on that project. So we're not, it's not all contractor-based, it's, it is, it is Conroe ISD and, and our needs too. I mean, it, it's not excuses, it's reasons, I mean, but we've had, um, this would be the third or fourth board seated in the course of this project.
Right.
We've had, I counted, board members, we've had twenty-one or twenty individual board members since we, this project started. We've had two, three school superintendents since this project started. I've had six assistant superintendents of high schools since this project started. Uh, literally, there's two people on this project that started it in twenty-fourteen and are still there today. And that's the owner of Ellisor Construction and myself. Everybody else on the project has changed since it started. So managing those changes has been a chore and I'd like to compare it to what we're doing at, at Timber Mill High School, which is a good value, good, good product, it's about a seven hundred and forty thousand square foot building, three hundred and eight million dollars. Conroe High School is a seven hundred and four thousand square foot building on an existing campus while it's occupied and it's a hundred and sixty-two million dollars total. So we've been working very diligently to try to make sure we maintain that value. And we got a, at the end of the day, Conroe High School in its current state, when it's finished, will be an exceptional value relative to Timber Mill when it opens, uh, in twenty-twenty-seven.
So are you saying Ellisor has been the, the general contractor since the beginning?
Correct.
That's been good money for them then.
I mean, well, they're-
We need it done.
They're, yeah, I mean, their, their, their fees are relative, are competitive, they competed against a, a group of folks to get the job, but, but their fee is, uh, earned.
Okay, so two follow-ups on that, sorry, but could we get a copy of the culpability report, the breakdown on it?
Sure.
And what was attributed to say, um, whether it was designer error, whether it was, um, in general contractors, what, what we caused to be, I'd, I'd really be interested in looking at that.
That'd be great.
And then the last one is when Conroe High School is complete, complete by the end of twenty-twenty-six?
Substantially complete.
Substantially complete, no.
No, no, complete.
Final completion?
Final completion. We will be, and Timber Mill is open, Conroe High School is not going to be needing major work anytime soon.
Well, like forty-five, some of that roof section is ten years old, I mean, so not, not immediately, but yeah.
That's different, that's maintenance.
Yeah, we will, we will be looking at Conroe High School for long-term capital maintenance projects. Uh, the, the, the capacity of the building is established as we open Timber Mill, the capacity of Conroe reduces significantly. Uh, and that'll ease up, ease up the overall, um, feel in, of, of that building. And so at a, at a smaller capacity, uh, we don't anticipate coming back there for many things other, that, that would require, you know, capital investment.
Thank you sir, very much, anyone else?
I would just, sorry, go ahead. I would like to add that at the end of this, we have a lessons learned report from that project, um, for reference.
Deep read, yeah, that's great.
Because I would think it would be safe to say that we had not taken on a project of that magnitude prior to twenty-fourteen, is that safe?
I, I would say there's probably not a school district in Texas that took on a project of this magnitude.
Thank you, yeah, that's, that's true.
I appreciate that.
And, and leading up to the twenty-nineteen bond or even the twenty-fifteen bond where the project started. And I mean, we met, we had meetings with the school board at the time over what would be the right thing to do. We had an opportunity to build a brand-new, brand-new building right across the street.
Yeah.
Uh, but we didn't have any place to put the kids, right? So we, if we had a place to put the kids, then we may have built a new building on that site and been done years ago. Uh, but we, we had to work with what we've got, I mean, and, and it's been, been an undertaking.
It's always twenty-twenty.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, one last question, the terms of the, the punch list, I assume that changes based off of each building, correct? That's not the same everywhere? I mean, will we be able to see the terms of, you know, here's substantial completion, this is what's left, board, this is what it's gonna look like, this is what our students will see, this is what our staff will see, y- you know, um-
I mean, I, that, that's odd to present that level of detail at this, at this level, but we're happy to report.
Well, you can send it to us, it could be in the board brief, it doesn't have to be from the DIAA.
I mean, but we'll be happy to give you the, I mean, the, the physical picture representation update of the state of the campus as we approach, uh, August. I mean, that's, that's not a problem and then we can, we can present to board whatever level of detail y'all wanna see.
Okay.
One thing that trustee Duncan said that's really important in this whole process is that lessons learned and that we need to set up a system so, as easy to said, everybody keeps coming and going. But if we set up systems of processes of what, what we need to do and, uh, really are clear about that, cause I mean, as he said, things have changed three and four times, so then we know what it is and so we can, we can grow from that. Cause that's the point, and then that clarity and, and that process of what we're doing, it, it makes a whole lot of sense. And so I'm looking forward to getting that done with y'all.
All right, thank you very much. I know we, we pelted you.
August third.
We, we, I do have one, one slide I do wanna show you too. Uh, this slide is very important, uh, relative to some of the questions that got asked. So, uh, I haven't done a, an update for general construction update at the board since April of last year, uh, so, uh, or April this year, rather, April twenty-twenty-five. We've been recording these and there, there's a YouTube channel that has them all on it monthly. Uh, what we uncovered, uh, this week, as a matter of fact, is they're, they've been on the website, just not in the same spot. So they actually appear three places on the world wide web, one would be on our YouTube channel, which you can see them listed there. Uh, one on the bond update, uh, slide, so there, if you went there today, you'd see all of the videos that we've recorded so far. And then they're also in the board meeting presentations folder and I think that was, that led to some of the conversations that, that led to this, this update. I mean, I'm happy to present every month or every other month or once a quarter, or, I mean, whatever y'all need for, to have full faith in what we're doing. Uh, I'm happy to, I'm, I'm just following direction at this point, so happy to.
I appreciate that, I looked for those videos and I must've been looking in one of the places that it wasn't. So I, I only saw three from six months ago, so I'm glad to know that they're all up there. Um, I might be the lone wolf on the board, but I would like a quarterly update. I think that, I know we were streamlining the board meetings, I understand efficiency is everything at the board meeting, but it's a lot of taxpayer money, that's what we're here for, so.
And, and we, we do have, we've kind of, we're on the, what we would call the downhill slide, the biggest push was this past summer uh, for the total number of projects in progress. As we pursue next summer, it's a little bit less and then as we open the big buildings, it gets a little bit less too. But that means we're, we're looking forward to what, what the next, uh, round of our buildings are gonna need, um, which is a, a constant conversation for us, we'd be happy to update y'all as often as you like.
And that is, uh, um, you were saying opening up buildings, I think next year we open five?
Uh, in twenty-twenty-six, we open two, um, and then when we get to twenty-twenty-seven, that's where we open the Grand Oaks campus in January. And then we open Timber Mill, uh, Cart, Cartwright and Candy Creek ninth grade in, uh, in August. And, uh, we're working on the, the design package for Washington High School's project now and it looks like it's gonna be a January of twenty-twenty-seven open, which means it finishes at the end of twenty, or January twenty-eighth, sorry, it finishes at the end of twenty-seven. So all of the, the big jobs, high school, junior high, ninth grade are all in the next window of time, which is, sounds like it's a long ways away, but for us, it is literally tomorrow. I mean, we're, we're, um, working feverishly to make sure we get them all together, order the furniture, get all this stuff in those buildings. Meanwhile, managing the construction so that we keep everything on track.
Also, kudos for, um, Isler and Campbell, uh, opening.
Thank, thank you, and that was, it's an example of one of the things that we had to deal with, uh, our utility providers, uh, at, at those two campuses, really made those push to the very, very last minute. So I mean, weather's one thing, but when we can't get power on until the month before school starts, it, it makes it difficult. But the contractors are committed to turn things over on time, getting the kids in school for the first day of school. I mean, so, and that was a great example, that was Marshall Construction did those two buildings, but Ellisor has, it got the same level of commitment for Conroe High School. They're also having success and are on schedule, on budget for Grand Oaks. They're our contractor for the Grand Oaks Junior High and, and ninth grade campus as well. So they're, I mean, they are committed to the district, it's not a one and done. I mean, these are partnerships that have been forged over, over many years and they're committed to, to bring it, bring it across the finish line.
I also wanna shout out to Dr. Smith and her team over at Conroe High School.
I spoke with her at lunch today and I, um, I really was trying to give her our word that we were concerned, we care and we're, we're working towards it. So thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Okay, Dr. Vincent, we are now ready for our school board policy update.
Now the exciting start, stuff begins, correct, I mean, school board policy. We had so many new first readings last month that we're actually working on some fine, fine tuning of board first readings that we're gonna hold off until December. Knowing that it was a full agenda and knowing that we had a lot of different things done and also knowing that it was, we had a little bit of time to do this, that we can focus our attention towards, um, you know, getting these second readings complete. And then this, what you will have next month is the balance of the first readings and, uh, we'll be taking those, uh, uh, a long trip. I think that there's, there's several of those that we'll be, they'll be reviewing, so. You actually don't have any new first readings, uh, to, to review at this point in time. And, uh, but we do have, uh, several, uh, second readings that we will be considering as far as that goes. And I don't know if you would like to, to transfer to that or you just wanna go back up there and, and move through it? So I'll just actually just wait until we, until we have them.
Let's go ahead and keep our action items where we have them. And let's go ahead and go to teaching and learning, will that be okay with everyone? Is that our, okay? All right, let's just keep going in order then, sir, and thank you very much. Um, teaching and learning, item, uh, seven, we'll receive information regarding our school calendar for twenty-six, twenty, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven.
Good evening, President Odom, Dr. Vincent, members of the board. I'm here to provide an update for the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenties to have a school calendar. All right, so looking at our timeline that we had presented to you a month ago, we are now at the point where we are giving you a review of the community surveys, which we've shared in some board briefs, and then also giving you some feedback from the district level committee, uh, in reference to some of the calendars that we are currently previewing. So looking at our surveys that we received, uh, this is one of the most popular surveys that we have in our school district. Once we get done through both processes and two rounds, we'll have over thirty thousand, uh, responses received. So in this particular survey, it was about eleven thousand five hundred responses. You can see here for the majority of the people that gave us feedback were community members, uh, parents of C I S D and then also the feeders and at all levels of our school district. So the survey said the following, fifty-eight percent of the respondents, um, and twenty-nine percent of the respondents liked our current calendar. So if you really look at indifference, you can really say that together about eighty-seven percent of our people like the calendar that we currently have, like the format. Seventy-three percent of them prefer having that middle of the August start and then ending around the May twenty-seventh date. Ninety-three percent preferred an earlier start date. Remember, we've had a conversation before that, uh, we have to apply for a district of innovation to have an early start date, because normally it's going to be the last, uh, Monday in August. Eighty-two percent want that winter semester to end for credit recovery and fi- uh, excuse me, not credit recovery, but credit and then final exams. Seventy-five percent, this is really important, because we ask it every year. Seventy-five percent of our community and constituents, stakeholders, prefer four or three-day weekends versus that one fall week off in October. And sixty-four percent, uh, prefer the week of March fifth through nineteenth, that's different than our last two calendars. Remember, one of the big, um, questions that came up last time is when is daylight savings? Daylight savings in two thousand twenty-seven is March the fourteenth. And seventy-four percent prefer to day off in April, because from the Easter holiday in March all the way to the end of the school year, it's about ten weeks. So they were saying, can we have a break in April? And our staff, we asked them a separate question about where they would like staff development, just to give us some opportunities when we played with some of these calendars formats. Forty-one percent said they'd like early release, uh, day at each grading period, if we could accommodate it. And when we could give them staff development, they prefer to have it around, um, near school holidays. So with that said, we had, uh, conversations with our district level team at last Wednesday's meeting and I wanna thank a couple of our members from T N L that helped lead the conversation behind the scenes. Dr. Jared Lambert helps us with the minutes and Dr. Dana Boyer, um, also helps us with the minutes. So they were able to present to our committee last week and just pu- put these scenarios out there. And we really have two versions of calendars, the calendar A's and the calendar B's. So they're similar in structure, but the main difference is the calendar A's are the four to three-day weekend options and then the calendar B's look at options for that week off in October. Even though our survey says that the majority want the four to three-day weekends, we still want to just put it out there to say that we did try. So we have shared with you-
Dr. Upshaw, can I ask you?
Yes, please.
When you, when you refer to that survey, can you, um, state how many were surveyed and who that included? And that seventy-five to twenty-four, or seventy, it was like twelve thousand. Okay, thank you, I didn't, I didn't see that, thank you.
Absolutely, no problem. Oh, I'm sorry, there we go, yeah, no problem. Okay, and then with that said, here are the versions of the current calendars that we have, the A ones and the A twos, or the A one, A two, and the B one and B two. So I'm gonna refer us back to this portion of the site, it kinda summarizes, and I'm here to see if you have any questions or any recommendations as we move forward.
I have, I have one recommendation that I mentioned to Dr. Vincent last week. Um, I noticed in November, we had a weekend where we had a four-day weekend that included a Friday and a Monday. And then we had a, like a couple of, two weeks later, this is this year's calendar, we had a weekend where we had a Monday and a Tuesday off because of elections.
Yes ma'am.
So that was two four-day weekends within a three-week period. And I wanted to see about, suggesting that we avoid that in the future, just, it, it just seemed redundant and like the kids were out of the classroom for a very extended period of time within a sho- a short window and they lost a lot of momentum, I felt like. So one suggestion I, I brought to his attention would be that we withdraw from allowing, um, our, our schools to be used as election sites.
Yep.
So I think that could remedy that problem and that would be, maybe require some, um, coordination with local officials, but we could get that done sooner than later.
Did that, uh, we stopped allowing a lot for elections, that's because of safety and security, uh, because of the, you know, the end and the ass and the process with it about ten years ago.
Yeah.
Because it got, it got a little crazy and so, you know, looking at what those different options are, we worked with, obviously with our, our municipalities to do it. So that's, that's on the, on the docket to start looking at.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm glad you mentioned it.
Having that election day Tuesday and Monday.
You know, yeah, I mean, it just honestly, it's, it's always, it was kinda fun having kids in school when we had elections and stuff. We had, you know, kid votes and all kinds of stuff, it was kinda fun.
Yeah.
So if you can do that, it's kinda, will make it festive, but I mean, it, it's fun when you can do it. But I mean, and the practical nature, it's been done here for a long time. Again, we stopped doing it, cause it, cause I was just, you know, there's a lot, there's safeties, I mean, there's just a lot of stuff in and out and around, you know, that's how that goes.
Yeah, and we have other facilities that can be used for elections, so wanna look into that and utilize that to our ability, or to our advantage when it comes to keeping our kids in, in the classroom, so.
Yes ma'am, thank you for the feedback, any other questions?
I, I just wanted to tell you that I was, I was pretty confident, um, that the, the not doing the fall break, but the three and four-day weekends for educators, um, would be more preferable and even for parents. Because while a lot of parents, there are those that would like that week off, but those generally are the ones that have the ability to be off and, or at home with their children or to take a trip during that time. Um, the, the, as an educator, I really appreciate the fact that there are three and four-day weekends, because it gives you a little more time for recharging and getting that break and you don't like have a halt and then you start back up again. So, um, I, I, I was, I was pleasantly surprised that what I thought was actually truth and that the results were seventy-five, seventy, seventy-five percent?
That was the teachers that wanted the-
The, those survey.
Just, uh, period.
Did the teachers want the week or, I know there was some concern that they had kids in other districts?
So seventy-five percent preferred, now I would have to delineate the data a little bit further to, to give you that information to see if it was the specific staff, but I can provide that information if you'd like in our, in our board brief. Yes ma'am, thank you.
I know, um, a number of working parents have expressed to me that they're very concerned about having that full week off.
Yes.
They're saying, what are we gonna do? So I do think the three and four-day weekends are probably preferable.
And the fact that we're now almost fifty-fifty on our ECO disk and a number of our parents not having vacation time and, um, and if they're home or having to find childcare during that time, it becomes a major, either you have children unsupervised or you have parents that are losing, um, their, their, their money because they're not salary and they're not vacation time.
You're still finding childcare, even if it's three or four days.
It's it's easier for them to find someone for a day, a Friday, a family member or someone to find for a day on a three day weekend. Or they don't have to take both days off. They can take one day, but not both days if it's a four day weekend. It's easier on those families than it is to have a whole week out and trying to find childcare for that entire week. It it is. I mean, I mean, I came from a single parent household, and and I can tell you, it either fell to me as a 12 year old or a 13 year old taking care of my siblings, or or my mom had to make arrangements, and that was before we actually had that fall break. But I'm just saying, every time we had time off from school, that's what happened.
I know some districts that they have looked into offering camps or different programs. Is that something that we have looked into to offer childcare if we did do a longer?
That is a possibility. We could look into it, but I wouldn't want to commit that on our own myself. Apparently, it would be something we'd have to currently, we don't have that.
You're not going to watch the kids?
I can't. I can do about 100 at a time, you know.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? No, that was it.
That's it. And we do have some sample calendars up there. So currently, what our next step would be was to send out another survey out to our community with some sample calendars. We probably won't have a survey that sends out many versions. It's either going to be this one or that one, and that would be our next step to gather that feedback. We'll go back to the district level in January to gather their feedback for their recommendation to you and then try to come to a board decision in January.
And public service announcement, that meeting will be at the Jet Center.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Upshaw, for all your hard work.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving on to business and finance, and the we'll have discussion and request for approval to transfer unassigned fund unassigned fund balance to our health fund, Ms. Garza.
All right. So items eight A and B are follow up to our workshop discussion. The first item is that $7 million transfer from the general fund to the health fund to shore up the plan for the 24, 25 school year. So that at this time, we're asking for your approval of that transfer.
Are we ready for a motion or do we need discussion? All right. Do I have a motion to accept the request for the fund transfer to our from our fund balance to our health fund transfer?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor show by the uplift of hands. The motion carries seven zero. Okay, next discussion, request for approval to transition the district's employee health insurance program from self funded plan to TRS active care effective September 1 of 2026.
All right. So obviously, another follow up from our workshop item. And as as was stated in the workshop, in an effort to provide a stable, long term healthcare solution for our employees, we are recommending a change to transition to all of our self funded insurance plans to the TRS active care system effective 9/1 of 2026.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to make this happen. To transfer from our self funded program to the TRS active care effective September 1.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor show by the uplift of hands. All right. The motion carries seven zero. And I I want to make a comment thanking you all again for your really hard work and as difficult as it was. But I also want to thank my board. This was a really hard decision for us, and I'm very proud of the work.
As was us.
Yes. And I'm very proud of the work they all put in.
Yes.
And the questions that were asked to understand before having to make this decision.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza.
Okay, item number nine, planning and construction. Mr. Foster? I guess we could have just gone to you at that time, but it was out of order on the agenda.
It's taking order.
I'm trying.
Well, good evening again. It's it's my pleasure now to bring forward for your consideration and approval the selection of a construction manager at risk for our next set of projects. There's two items here, and we'll do them individually. But starting with our project at San Jacinto and Rice Elementary, which is two of our gem addition projects, San Jacinto is also a major renovation, so we're going to affect a lot of a lot of that campus. At San Jacinto in particular, we're working with the mud district around us, Arta Via, the neighborhood that's adjacent to and actually touches the back of the San Jacinto property. And their mud has agreed to work with us to take over our utilities, which would help us eliminate a wastewater treatment plant that's on that site and a water well, domestic water plant that's on that site. And so adding the gem, making the building look good, making the site work without those those features on it is part of this project. Packaged up with that is Rice Elementary, which is a gem addition project out of our 2023 bond referendum. So this is a a selection of a construction manager at risk. So we did work with our design team on this, H K S and our purchasing department. We issued a request for qualifications. We had nine companies respond to that request for qualifications. The law will only allow us to invite five to step two of our two step process. So the nine companies that responded were Brookstone, Ellisore, Marshall, Pogue, and Telleson, or rather, the five that we shortlisted were Brookstone, Ellisore, Marshall, Pogue, and Telleson. So after receiving the the qualifications, reviewing them with our committee, and receiving pricing from those firms, we're recommending Pogue Construction as the best value for the district. We typically and did here, like we do, make the ranking a part of this board item as well, just in case we're not successful negotiating the contract terms with Pogue, we can move to the the second better or the second ranked offer if we need to. But this time, we're requesting your approval of Pogue Construction as our construction manager at risk for San Jacinto and Rice Elementary.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to say I'm really excited about the San Jacinto gem renovation. I think that is a welcomed incoming project for those that are at San Jac, especially the coaches there, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a motion?
And I motion to approve.
Second. I have Semler for second. All right. All those in favor show by the uplift of hands. And the motion carries seven zero. Okay, Mr. Foster?
All right. Our next selection is the construction manager risk for another set of gem addition projects at David and Galatas Elementary's. And these are straight gem additions and critical infrastructure improvements for these two campuses. And like the other, we work with H K S and our purchasing department. We had an R F Q. We had 10 companies respond, of which we shortlisted the requisite five that the state will allow. We shortlisted Brookstone, Nash, Pogue, Teal, and Telleson to participate in the second step of our two step process. And after reviewing their pricing and their qualifications, we're recommending Nash Construction to be the best value for the district. Like the other, the ranking is also a part of this program or part of this board item. And at this time, we're requesting your approval of Nash Industries as our CM at risk for this project.
Okay, any questions or discussion? All right, then I'll take a motion to. I'm sorry, did someone say something? Okay, sorry, I just want to make sure. All right, then seeing no discussion, we'll consider the approval for the superintendent to authorize the designate or his designate to negotiate and execute these documents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Nelson, second.
The second.
Thank you, Duncan and or trustee Duncan. And all those in favor show by the uplift of hands. Making it easy, ladies. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I believe that brings us up to action items. Number 10. And that would be discussion and request for approval to enforce board policy C Y local related to intellectual property.
More fun with board policy. Here's the thing, you already have board policy that enforces that that says this. It's just so think back with me just for a moment. You go to Kroger, and I go when I go to my neighborhood Kroger, see all of the Conroe High stuff, you know, they pay us a fee for that as far as the name, image, and likeness for those that that information. So what we're looking at now is kind of shoring those kind of things up because really, Conroe has several logos and brands that really proudly represent our success, character, and really the values of our school district, right? As part of the efforts to ensure consistent application and permissions of for all brands and logos, we plan to review the vendors and organizations currently using our logos and contact those with that written agreement to regulate their use. This is a simple process. You know, it allows us to do. The fact of the matter is, is since we're we've not maybe necessarily uniformly enforced it, we're in that process now. We're going to work towards doing that.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, those all those in favor. Oh, wait, we need a motion. Do I have a motion to enforce the C Y policy? Do I need a motion on this? We already have the policy. We don't need it. We need an official motion on it?
We're trying to create an event where we can point to.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just. And I guess I should have said real quickly, thank you, Mr. O'Handelman, for being here today at the dais with us to serve as general counsel. I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
Yes, I moved to approve the enforcement of board policy C Y local related to intellectual property.
All right. Thank you for that, Ms. Trustee Nelson. Do I have a second?
A second, sir.
Thank you, trustee Duncan. No further discussion. All right, well, then we will call this for a vote. All those in favor show by the uplift of hands. All right, the motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Dr. Vincent.
On to item two for action items, and it is the adoption of a resolution and ballot to cast votes for candidate or candidates to the Montgomery County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. And we did this not too long ago as it was way behind on the schedule based on the county's scheduling of it. When we did this, we selected Charles Shirley and Luis Luis Prudazza, and Luis's session is still there for he's there for another two years, but Charles is is up for reelection. I'm assuming since we all supported him in the past, is that what we want to continue doing? Do we have any discussion on a nominee on any of the other candidates? All right, then I'll entertain a motion that we cast our 688 votes to Mr. Charles Shirley for the MCAD board position.
So moved.
I actually do have not discussion, but question. Did we confirm that by doing this, this guarantees him a two, a two year?
Oh, I'm that's a question.
For legal?
Four year.
Four year? There, she's got it right in front of her.
Okay, so this is one candidate for a four year stint on the MCAD board.
If he has if he guys the votes to to get it, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I haven't done the count from the other taxing entity.
And how many other taxing entities are we? I know that the legislation changed a few details about the way this is done, so I want it is for clarity and in record, I want to say.
They haven't changed the appointed ones, but they've they've now created some elected ones that go with them.
Right, okay. So so we'll be giving all 688 votes to Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
It makes it more likely that they'll get elected.
Right.
Correct. Okay.
All right. So all those in favor show by, oh, wait, that was trustee Nelson did the motion. And the second, who was the second? Did anyone do a second on it yet?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Dawson. All those in favor of the motion at hand, please show by the uplift of hands. All right. Motion carries seven zero, and our best wishes for Mr. Charlie.
I just I want to thank Mr. or Charles Shirley for for putting himself in this ring. This is one of the most important things that we do as a school district or as a board because he sits on that and makes decisions about how our properties are are valued and and that affects our taxpayers. And right now, property tax is a hot topic. I don't know if if anybody else is tuned into that.
Little bit, little bit.
I really wanted to shout out to Charles Shirley for for wanting to serve his community.
Thank you. All right. And now we're on to item number 11. Review and possibly adopt revisions to the following policies. BBE local, in fact, these are all local, so I'm just going to say them. BBE, CAA, CDA, CQB, EHBB, GKA, and GKB. If I'm not mistaken, we are well, I'll go to Mr. Vin, Dr. Vincent, real quickly, and then I'll come back to my question or my request if there's a motion regarding GKA.
Actually, that would be great because here's the thing. You want to a couple of you pointed out that needed to be updated. EHBB, it was worded incorrectly, and so I'm going to I'm going to have to ask you to have a motion to amend, and I'll actually put it in front of you, EHBB to insert the word rules and after the word state. So we want it to be correct. That's an important thing. Grammar is important. And then GKA local. The thing is, we want to get this right, and we are just battling back and forth what the difference between tobacco and caffeine and nicotine is. And so as the struggle continues, we are going to bring that back to you in November. And I know a lot more about nicotine than I've ever known in my entire life. And my Kara is this working with me through that process. We're going to appreciate if you could allow us just to table that, and so we can kind of bring that to you with a DH local that will be enforceable.
Sorry, which policy are you referring to?
GKA.
We're going, you're asking for us to take a motion to table GKA?
Yes, and then a separate motion out of that for EHBB.
I have a quick question on you. Um, all state rules or all state laws? Was rules the exact word?
I'm not have I don't have it in front of me.
There's just a blank after state with that one.
You had a question about state laws?
Well, it's for EHBB that there's a bit of a typo in it, and it said the district shall comply with all state regarding students with dyslexia and related disorders, and there is there needs to be laws or rules.
I'm referring to my handy dandy.
The the term was inserted as rules because recently, in accordance with state law, the state board of education adopted a series of rules specifically related to dyslexic education that that set out the procedures of how that's supposed to be done. There's been a but change in terms of that as it's kind of migrated from 504 to special ed over the last two sessions. And so the state board of education were directed by the legislature to adopt rules for that, and the reason the inclusion of that is the reference to the state board of education rules.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
What he said.
Okay, so the the motion that I need is a motion to amend, God bless, that's not part of the emotion. I motion, what I need is a motion to amend EHBB to insert the word rules after the word state in that policy that was in our board book. So I just need that motion.
Hi, motion to amend EHBB to insert the word rules after the word state.
Okay, so trustee Nelson and trustee Semler for second. She they both said it at the same time. That's okay, I got them both. And then now, since we have that one up, let's just go ahead. Are there any is there any discussion, other discussion on this one? Can we just go ahead and vote on this one so that we, since we're on it? All right. So all those in favor of, well, I guess I have to take the vote on this first. All those in favor of adding the word rules, please show by the uplift of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right. That's that vote. Second vote is all those in accepting EHBB as new board policy, please show by the uplift of hands. Oh, wait, I need a motion on that. Do I have a motion? Thank you.
Second.
Sorry, all the legalities. Okay, now, any discussion on that? All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of accepting EHBB as presented with the rule change, please show by the uplift of hands. Six, seven, okay, seven. And the motion carries for that as well. All right, going back to the I need a motion to table GKA. Would someone like to make the motion to table GKA until we can get the definitions there set up? Do you want to? That's okay.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Duncan. Any other discussion on GKE and the tabling of it? I mean, GKA, sorry, GKA, that's very important, GKA. All right, all those in favor of tabling, please show by the uplift of hands. All right, the item is tabled seven zero. Okay, so that brings us to CAA, correct?
Correct.
All right, just making sure, um, all right.
Is it possible to group these together to approve as a group?
I am more than happy to group them together. That was a question I actually asked our attorney before the meeting. So that would leave us remaining, um, BBE, CAA, CD, ACQB. We already did EHBB, so that's EHBB, all local. I need a motion to take action on all of those mentioned.
One more, Misty.
GKB as well.
GKB, it was hidden there.
I'll do it. I move to approve BBE, CAA, CD, ACQB, EHBB, GKB as presented by administration.
Thank you, trustee Dawson, second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, trustee Duncan. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of passing these, please show by the uplift of hands. Y'all are on a roll. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much for your efficiency.
Thank you.
All right, so that leads us to, um, closed session. And it is, let me just make sure, because we just moved through a bunch of things at once, I want to make sure I didn't skip something. All right, so I am correct. We're now, the time is now seven fifty-five. The board will now move to closed session as authorized by Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, and five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four to discuss the items listed in section thirteen of the agenda. All final votes and actions will be taken in open session. The board will call back individuals as necessary for each agenda item, however, an individual's presence must be necessary, only if an individual's presence must be necessary for the discussion outlined in the agenda, and they will be excused once the presence is no longer required. Again, the time is seven fifty-five. The board is now back in open session. The time is eleven thirteen PM. We will take action on items discussed in closed session. The first item that we will address is, um, a level-three grievance hearing. Do I have a motion?
A motion to reinstate employee Tim Barr, subject to assignment by the superintendent?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion?
I would like to say something. Um, this case really hit me, and I, I just want to state, um, I don't have any tolerance for students assaulting any of our staff. And I would like to change our policy, change our handbook, to ultimately give the authority back to bus drivers on whether or not a student can be on the bus. This is a safety issue. Um, he is driving around an island, and, um, there's so many ramifications for that. So, um, I know that we're, we, uh, level one and level two were based on policy, but I would like to change some of those policies, so.
Thank you, trustee Dawson.
I would make, like to make a follow-up statement on that. I also would like to make sure that with our special education students, um, when referrals come in, especially when it has to do with violence, um, that, that, the, the referral goes straight to the administration in the school, and then we get to ARD, because the ARD committee should be coming up with solutions for that. And that, that's what I'd like to say about that, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, um, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please show by the uplift of hands. And the motion carries seven zero. All right, the next item on the agenda has to do with, uh, regarding the Conroe ISD Education Foundation and related to governance matters. Do I have a motion?
I move pursuant to school board policy, BDB local, to establish a Conroe ISD Education Foundation Committee, and to allow the superintendent to prepare and file a charter for a Conroe ISD Education Foundation, and in consultation with the Conroe ISD Education Foundation Committee to prepare draft bylaws for future adoption by the foundation board, and to negotiate a transition plan with the existing Conroe ISD Education Foundation.
Trustee Dunk, uh, Dawson, Nelson.
Hopefully you weren't writing all that down.
Trustee Nelson, after you just did such a beautiful job of reading that, I think that that was the other one. I think, I believe I handed you the wrong one. I think we were authorizing the superintendent to seek information, because it was the one without committee.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I just happened to hear you mention committee, and I realized that. So what we are authorizing, if I'm not mistaken, what we wanted to authorize is the superintendent to pursue.
We have to take a vote now, do we not?
You didn't have a second.
Oh, you didn't ask for a second.
Do you want, I know.
Okay, all right, well, then I'll change it. I move to allow the superintendent to prepare and file a charter for a Conroe ISD Education Foundation, and in consultation with the trustees, to prepare draft bylaws for future adoption by the foundation board, and to negotiate and transition, a transition plan with the existing Conroe ISD Education Foundation.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, ladies. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say thank you to the current foundation for all the hard work they've done to raise these funds for our school district. They've done so much for our district, and so I wanted to make sure to thank them.
Yes, and I was sad that, as latest things got, that we didn't get to recognize them for that here. We actually chased them down into the parking lot, trying to catch them so we could, and we didn't get that opportunity, so hopefully they'll hear this. I'm sure they were so, they were interested, and I know that they'll go back and look, so.
Yes, and for the twenty-plus years that they have been doing this, we are very thankful for their service, and when they came to us for this meeting and proposed this transition, um, it was, it was a shock, but I think it's going to be a win for our students and our community and our, our, our staff and faculty.
Yes, I agree. All right, so that being said, we have a, uh, a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All right, and the motion carries seven zero. Item D is the approval to terminate the probationary contract of Darby Brady for good cause. Do I have a motion?
I do have a motion. I move to terminate the probationary contract of Darby Brady for good cause.
Can I, can I, this is a mid-contact termination, it should say propose the termination of bad, for good cause.
So I'll restate that.
Hold on one second, didn't we already do the, the propose last month?
Did you propose?
Yes, we did last month.
This is final.
That's all right, sir.
Then you, you.
It's late, it's late, yes, you had the right motion, so it stands as you just said. Would you repeat it, please?
I move to terminate the probationary contract of Darby Brady for good cause.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please show by the uplift of hands. And the motion carries seven zero. Are there any other requests from trustees regard, this is trustee request, item number sixteen, are there any future items to be discussed other than what we already have coming forward, um, for the December meeting? And obviously, anytime after this, you can, you can reach out to Dr. Vincent and let us know.
The GKB local, is that what you mean, and the FM local?
Yes.
Yes.
Those I know were part of the ones to still be worked on.
And, and the policies requested by trustee Dawson?
Yes.
And the handbook revision?
Now, we can try to have those ready for discussion for.
We can start working on it.
Yes, that's, yes, we can start working on that, thank you. It usually takes a little bit longer than just that one meeting to get to. Um, okay, so FML, right? FML, which one was it, Ms., just to remind me, please?
FM local.
FM local. Okay, um, all right. Seeing no further business, I thank you all very much for your time this evening, and wish you all safe travels home. The time is now eleven twenty, and this meeting is adjourned.